Let's call the order. City Council meeting for October 28, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. We'll start with a roll call, starting from Councilman Law.
Kelly Law, here.
Chrissy Hanneman, present.
Jason Thielen, present.
Brent Rummler, present.
Jessica Smeuan, present.
Okay, and then we will have a prayer offered by Councilman Law and the pledge led by Councilwoman Hanneman.
For Father and Heaven, we're grateful to be here this evening to discuss matters of the city and citizens of Alpine. We're grateful for the beautiful place in which we have to live and grateful for all the citizens who take care of and look out for one another. We're grateful for those who provide our public safety and pray that thou will keep them safe. We pray that we may make the best decisions possible this evening and say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise. Repeat with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll move on to item number two, which is the consent calendar. Does, I believe Shane had an item for clarification?
Yeah, if it wasn't made clear in the staff report on the item D, the CDBG ADA ramp project, we bid out the number of ramps that we thought might be able to be accomplished with this project. The bid, the low bid came in at eighty-one thousand eight twenty, including our match. To maximize the grant, we have up to just under a hundred and seventeen thousand. And so our plan is to do some additional ramps. So even though the bid was eighty-one, we'd like it approved up to that max to maximize that grant.
Okay, are there any questions regarding items on the consent calendar? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rummler, seconded by Councilwoman Smeuan. Any further discussion items? Okay, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Brent Rummler, yes.
Jessica Smeuan, yes.
Okay, let's move on to public comment. So I have several things for public comment. So Andrew, you have an item for public comment, but we don't have a it's not a pub what is it called? It's not a public hearing. But we've got, you know, Mr. Page, who is an applicant, so he will come up and address. So we had a public hearing during planning commission, I believe. So we will move on. I don't see anything other than that. We've got Mr. Bennett, who will talk regarding the fire station. That's not, it's just a discussion item, so it's not really an action item. So we'll move on to item four, reports and presentations. Shane, are you doing, or do we have somebody from Larson and Company?
Yep, John is here in the audience.
Oh, I didn't see you, John. Usually the room is not this full for an audit report, but thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, counsel, for letting us come and take a few minutes of your time. I know you guys have a busy schedule tonight. We met a couple of weeks ago with the Audit/Finance Committee and spent probably about, I don't know, it was like an hour and a half, a couple hours, going through things. There were a lot of good questions. And as I go through the information, and if you have questions later on, feel free to call me. I know that we talked about maybe doing some training just for your education on the financial statements, just to help understand how to read them and what they're saying. But tonight, I just want to go through what our job was as the auditors, what we're giving an opinion on, what we're not giving an opinion on, and what those opinions are. So if you want to turn to page one in the bound copy, so it's right after the table of contents. This is the auditor's report. It always precedes the financial statements. In the first two paragraphs, this is the first opinion that we give. This is on the financial statements themselves. This is the primary purpose of our audit. And that opinion is an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. I know that you're not going to see those words in that second paragraph. What unmodified or unqualified means is that we haven't had to change or modify our audit report for conditions that we found during the audit that would change our opinion. So that's a clean opinion. It just, I don't want to bore you with the accounting language. It's very standard, it's very geek language. So we'll move on from there. Just a couple of things that I wanted to point out in the auditor's report. The second section is just the basis for our opinions, so there's a couple of different standards that we have to follow. So we have to follow generally accepted auditing practices, as well as government auditing practices and standards. In that third section, and this identifies your responsibilities as it pertains to the financial statements, your responsibility and management's is to know and understand the accounting principles, make sure that they're being done correctly in the books during the year. And then that second paragraph, this is kind of a new requirement that you have since COVID came about. And this is just to identify conditions or events that negatively impact the city that could prohibit you from continuing as a going concern. I don't love that language, and I actually think, in talking to the GFOA, they're considering changing that terminology. Because if you have something that negatively impacts the city, you're going to find a way to overcome it, whether it's getting state grants or federal grants or whatever. Cities typically don't go out of business because they don't have enough money, right? You never see a city that folds up shop and just says, well, we're done being a city. So going concern really doesn't make any sense for governments. And so I think that terminology is going to change in the next couple of years. The next section outlines our responsibilities. If you want to flip to the next page, it just kind of, some quick bullet points. We have to exercise professional judgment and professional skepticism. That means that we need to maintain a good relationship with the city. You need to be open and honest in your communication, and we do that by building trust. However, I counsel my team, every engagement that we're on, they're going to be looking for every little nuance and red flag. So they're going to continually, even though we have a good relationship, they're going to be skeptical and ask questions. We're looking for the risk of material misstatement in the financial statements. That's kind of the premise of our audit. And those can, those can be made by mistake, they can be intentionally made. There's also collusion, forgery, things like that. We're looking for those types of things. We're looking at your internal controls. We don't give an opinion on your controls. We'll talk a little bit more about that in another letter that we issue. So we'll move on. We're looking at whether or not you're using the accounting policies correctly. And that includes new GASB pronouncements that come out. This year, there was a couple of new ones that you were required to implement, and that was compensated absences, and then contingencies and concentrations. But Dave does a good job in keeping your staff informed of what those are. He'll usually call us and ask how we're recommending that they implement, just to make sure that gets done during the year instead of when we show up to do the audit. And then that last bullet point, we also are looking for negative trends or conditions or events that would prohibit you from continue as a going concern. Typically, when I'm reviewing financials, our financial statements and the audits, I'll go five, six years back and look at trends to make sure that there's not any negative trends that are signifying anything of that nature. All right, the next section talks about required supplementary information. So there's a couple of sections that are contained in the financial statements that are not considered part of the basic financial statements. And this is going to get a little bit confusing, but bear with me. So right after this report is a section called the Management's Discussion Analysis. And then immediately following the notes to the financial statements, there's a section called Required Supplementary Information. Those two sections are not considered part of the basic financial statements, but the standards boards require that they always accompany the financial statements because they give the statements more understandability and readability. However, since they're not part of the basic financial statements, they don't fall under our opinion, so they're considered unaudited sections. That's normal. It's not something that you can change as a city. That's just the way government financial statements are. However, I will recommend that if you don't like getting down in the weeds of the numbers, that you read the Management's Discussion Analysis, because it's more dialogue rather than just raw numbers. And there's a lot of comparative data between this year and last year. Typically, if you're used to looking at private business statements, a lot of times they'll have comparative years in those statements. But because of the nature and the way that governmental financial statements are set up, there's not enough room where you're dealing with multiple funds to have comparative data inside the statements. So that's why we have the MDNA. And then the Required Supplementary Information section just contains your budget for your major funds, the general fund, and then any major special revenue funds, as well as a ten-year schedule of the URS contributions, and then your schedule of proportionate share of the net pension liability, which most people don't care about those two schedules. It's just now with GASB sixty-eight requiring the net pension liability and things, you have to have those schedules. So that's what's contained in those two sections. Let's see, let's move on to page. We're going to be close to the back. So page fifty-six. There's not a page number there because our letterhead is hiding it, but this report just outlines that we perform your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. There are certain differences in a government audit versus a private company audit. Part of that is we're looking specifically at your internal controls. So I said that we were going to talk a little bit about, more about controls. What my staff is going to do is they're going to do walkthroughs with, on each of your processes, making sure that we understand what the processors are doing, and then identifying and testing the controls as in each of those processes to make sure that they're functioning the way that they're supposed to. We don't test enough of a sample size of your controls to give an opinion, so we don't give an opinion on controls. But we are testing transactions to make sure that, as they go through the process, that those controls are actually functioning. That's one of the things that I teach classes a lot on is fraud and how to identify it, as well as identifying what your risk is and then implementing controls. So A, I care that you actually have controls, and B, that they're functioning and they're doing what they should be doing, really to protect the city and to protect the employees. All right, the next page, if you want to flip over. So this is the second opinion that we give, and this is on your compliance, as well as the controls over your compliance. So we actually do give an opinion on your state compliance. It's a requirement, just like if you were to have a federal single audit, we have to look at both your compliance, as well as the controls over that compliance, to make sure that you have controls in place that ensure that you're not out of compliance. The procedures that were applicable to the city this year were outlined right there in that first page. So your budgetary compliance, fund balance, government fees, restricted taxes, the fraud risk assessment, and then the justice courts. So our opinion is very limited to these six areas. That's also an unmodified or an unqualified opinion. The same with the controls. So you do have controls in place that make sure that, you know, you're staying within budget, that your fund balance doesn't exceed the maximum general fund balance, and that you don't go negative in any funds. So that's the second opinion that we give is on your state compliance. All right, and then if you want to flip over to the next page, so page sixty-one, and this is the current year findings. So you can see that there weren't any state compliance findings and no findings last year, either on your financial statements or in state compliance. So I appreciate that, appreciate your staff. Nothing but good reports from my team on their work. When they request information, we got that information almost immediately. And I think we had a fairly quick turnaround on, in the audit, which makes me happy. Anytime that we get a delay in getting information, then the fraud risk errors on my neck start standing up, and I start thinking, okay, well, why aren't we getting that information? Are they trying to recreate the information? Do they not have the information? They don't, they're not retaining documentation like they, like they should be? Are they manipulating it? So I really appreciate it when we get good responses from your staff. So just tell your staff that they're doing a great job. It's nice to have Dave involved. We can throw questions off back and forth with Dave to make sure that things are being done right. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
I have two.
Okay.
I asked Shane about these yesterday. He suggested I bring these up with you, just.
Sure.
So I know how the federal pension system works, because I was a federal employee, I'm a retired federal employee. The, my contributions and my agency's contributions were paid to the Office of Personnel Management, and they're the ones who administer my pension and send me my direct deposit once a month, which I like to get. So I noticed in here that there are several references to long-term liabilities related to pensions. On page six, it says four hundred and eighty-seven thousand roughly, which include the net pension liability, and then other places, net pension liability on page twelve, deferred outflows related to pensions. Do we have some kind of ongoing pension payment requirement outside of the employer contributions we make?
No, so, all right, this is going to get down into the nitty-gritty and the nerdy part. So just like with the federal government, we have our own pension system in the state, right? It's all done by, under the Utah retirement systems. So GASB sixty-eight, so the Government Accounting Standards Board, they came out with a guidance that said, now you're required to report if your pension is underfunded, if you're overfunded, what the deferred inflows and outflows, meaning contributions, earnings, things like that. Inside the state of Utah, all you have to care about as the city is that you're making the required contributions every year based on somebody's salary. However, the GASB says, if you're in a cost-sharing plan, then everybody who shares in that plan has to report their proportionate share of the liability. Do you have control over that? Absolutely not. So I don't like that all of the governments inside the state of Utah have to report this in their financial statements, because I think it's out of the scope. It's similar to the PTIF where this, GASB says that that's an investment. And if you talk to the state auditor, your PTIF is an investment. But if you put a million dollars in the PTIF, you're going to earn interest on that. If the market goes up, or if the market goes down, you're still going to get a million dollars out. So if the market goes up and now your value is at one point five, you're not going to pull out one point five. So it's not a true investment, right? But in the financial statements, they say, well, you have to put that at the far market value. But if I stand in front of you as a council and say, well, you have an extra five hundred thousand dollars sitting in the PTIF because of earnings, then you get excited, and you're like, ah, we got this money we can spend. You don't have the money to spend, you're going to pull a million dollars out. So it's the same with the pensions. The only time that's ever going to be a true liability is if everyone in the state decided that they're going to retire, and they have to fully fund the pension tomorrow, then they would reach out to all of the entities and say, hey, we have to fully fund the pension. This is what we require your liability to be.
Thanks, understood.
So another recommendation is, as you are making decisions as a council, when you're looking at any of the proprietary funds, because they're full accrual, they're going to have to record that, take all of that pension-related stuff out. Don't even include that in your business-making, in your decisions moving forward, because that's, that's an adjustment that gets made at the end of the year, just based on what the URS sends out to all of the entities. It doesn't really have an impact on you, like I said, unless it's some act of God where we're going to have to fully fund the pension tomorrow.
Thanks, perfect.
Okay.
My second question is on page eight. And the public safety expenses, it lists the total for 2024, fiscal year 2024 at one million seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and 2025 at two million nine hundred and eighty-two thousand. So that's a, that's a large jump. Talking to Shane, we thought maybe it might have been a typo.
Yeah, so it's not a typo, and this, this is going to get into the nuances of government financial statements. So if you were to look at last year's financial statements, and if you look at the funds, I think public safety was right around two point eight million, and this year it's right around two point nine million. What happens is, in order to get from the fund statement, so if you look at page, if you look at page sixteen, so this is what the financial reports are going to look like when Shane gives you guys reports. So you're going to see the general fund, you're going to see the capital projects fund, you're going to see the non-major funds, water, sewer. So you're going to see these on the fund level, and it's modified accrual. That means that there's nothing long-term. This is current use of resources. So what money do you have available to meet your needs in the upcoming twelve months? And that's how the fund accounting works in government. So it's almost like it's cash basis. So think of it as cash basis. So if you get money, you report that as cash in. If you spend money, that's cash out. Disregard anything that you know about business type, what goes up on the balance sheet and everything in accrual accounting. But then with GASB thirty-four, and this came out probably about twenty years ago, so now we have to start doing the statements, which are page twelve and thirteen. So if you look at the statement on twelve and thirteen, this rolls all of your governmental funds together under governmental activities, and it rolls all of your business-type funds under business-type activities. So all of your utility funds are consolidated under the business-type activities. This statement is full accrual. So we have to do a conversion that goes from the fund statements, which are cash basis. Now we have to put them full accrual, meaning these are all based on economic resources, meaning what assets do the, does the city have, and what long-term liabilities does the city have? And most of the time, this is going to be used for external sources. Now to get back to your question, last year, there was a significant amount of capital assets that were put into place. So in the fund financial statements, it's all expensed out. A portion of it is classified as capital outlay. And then when we put those statements together, we'll use all the capital outlay expenditures. And then whatever's left over, we have to come, come up with, okay, where does this come from? Does it come from general government? Does it come from public safety? And so that's why there's the difference in the public safety, is we just kind of allocated across the board last year and just took money out of like every entity or every function in order to get enough expenses in order to capitalize all of those assets. So now all those, all that, those expenses go up on the balance sheet as assets, and then they depreciate over time. So that's the full accrual nature. So that's the weirdness. So in reality, if you were to go look at the actual general fund last year, then the public safety is almost neck and neck. So that's, that's the difference. It's not a typo, and it's not. So you, as a council, I would, I would spend more time in the fund statements rather than the government-wide statements.
Thanks. Now you at least know I read the report.
That's good.
And I.
And I knew that question was coming, because Dave was like, hey, is there a typo in there? I'm like, no, Dave, it's.
And no guarantees, I'll remember your explanation next year, but I think I will with the pension, because that.
And that, and this is one of the things that, I can't remember, it was Chrissy, and I can't remember who the other council member was in the, in the meeting, but we talked about maybe having just a sit-down and going through all the statements and kind of explaining to council, okay, this is what this statement's telling you, and this is what you need to use it for, and this is where the information's coming from. That way, it gives you guys a better understanding. So one of the, one of my goals is to educate the public on government financial statements, because they are uniquely different monster than what we typically see in private business.
Thanks.
What is the state guidance on a rainy day fund? Can you remind me of?
Sure. So in the general fund, which is where all the, most of the activity happens, right? That's where all of your operations in the city happen, is in the general fund. You are capped at a max of thirty-five percent of your current year revenue. And that's anything that's unassigned or assigned or committed. So if we look at your fund statements, just to give you an example, so if you're looking at page fourteen, if we look at the fund balance section, which is in private terms, the equity section of the city, you've got sixty thousand dollars that's non-spendable. That means that it's already spent. For, in your case, it's prepaid expenses, so you've already, you've already spent that money. But you haven't recognized the expense yet. And then you have restricted of one point two. That means that there's external restrictions placed on that money. So none of that counts towards the thirty-five percent. It's only the two point seven, which is unassigned. And the only fund that you have unassigned fund balance is the general fund. If it moves to another fund, then it has to be assigned or committed to something else.
You said that was on page fourteen?
Yep, that, so it's the unassigned number under fund balance of two point seven. And if you look at page sixteen, under the total revenue is nine point six million in the general fund. So your maximum is thirty-five percent of what that nine point six is. Now, you cannot plan for the future on thirty-five percent fund balance, because that's thirty-five percent, like, that's got to account for all of your expenditures in the, in the near future, right? The next few months before you start getting additional revenues and things like that. So that's not a lot. I would like to see you, my recommendation is that you stay within that twenty-five to thirty-five percent. Keep it the most you can in the general fund. That just gives you more money to use in the next twelve months before you get revenue, so you don't have a revenue shortfall. If you have additional money, and this is, I think we talked about this in the meeting, because the question came up, if you are trying to plan for the future, then you need to move money out of the general fund, and you have to put it in the capital projects fund. So the capital projects fund is all assigned for future capital projects. So if you look at Orem City, for example, so we're their auditors, they just got a, they just built a new city building. They, over the last ten, fifteen years, have been saving money and moving it into the capital projects to where they didn't have to go bond for that city hall building. They were able to pay cash for it, because they've been saving for the last fifteen years. So that's how you save money. So that's going to be your rainy day fund kind of thing for future projects, is that capital projects. Now, black and white says, if it moves there, it has to be assigned to projects. I would take the gray stance and just say, look, if it moves in there, it's future capital projects. That doesn't mean that you can't unassign it if you need to and move it back into the general fund. If there's a revenue shortfall, like another COVID or whatever, and you're short of money, then you've got that. But that's where you need to save for future capital projects. And that's general government stuff. I mean, the water and the sewer, that, they can have whatever in their fund balance they need to. There's no limit on them. So any capital, any infrastructure, things like that, for your, for your systems, that's all going to be done in those funds, and they can accumulate as much as they need to.
Is that money that's just collected for those purposes, like the PI system? Or can you move capital improvement funds into those funds for future use?
You can. But most of the time, you're, you need to set, you need to have a rate study done that sets your rates sufficient enough that it's planning for future capital improvements.
Any other questions?
I thought, thank you, we've covered, you guys are covering all this stuff we covered in an hour and a half and a lot faster time, so, thank you. I did think that one, I, on the, in the Finance Committee, we, I'm the only one on that committee from this, and the other two are citizens who are also CPA, so they're not here with us tonight. But I, I think one thing that I get confused, we were asking about the difference between, and you were pointing out on page fourteen, assigned versus reserved versus, and could you explain again for all of us to keep learning? When it's restricted, it's extra, all that stuff, that whole little summary that you did before.
Yep.
Our meeting.
And this is going to be in your governmental funds. It's different for the business, and I keep saying governmental versus business type, but you guys understand the business type is going to be your, your utility funds, right? So they're, they're treated as mini businesses within the city. So they have to basically pay for themselves. So that's why you have to set the rates and fees and things sufficient to where it's basically paying for itself. You don't want to fund those utilities with taxpayer money. It's also restricted on how you can pull money out of those. So what used to happen was everybody would set their electric fees really high, or their sewer, or their water, and so they were accumulating all these funds, and they would pull it back to pay for things in the general fund. Inside the state of Utah, they've put really, they've really restricted it to how much you can take out, because that's almost taxation without representation, right? You guys can set the fees at whatever you want, and you don't have to go through the truth and taxation. So a council doesn't want to be the ones that have to raise taxes if there's not enough in the general fund. So then they just are sucking money out of the enterprise funds. And across the country, it's a big deal. I mean, I know I review statements for entities all over the country, in Georgia. That, that's how they run their governments. They just suck money out of the, they just set fee, really high fees and then they're just sucking money out to pay for the, the general fund. So all of that, we're gonna set that aside. Cause really in there, all you have is unrestricted or restricted. But in the governmental funds, you have five different categories. You've got non-spendable, which we've talked about, is either sitting in the form of inventory or it's already spent. Um, you have restricted and anything that's restricted, the only thing that can be restricted is if they has external restrictions on it. You cannot self-restrict anything. So for instance, the one point two million, I don't know, I'd have to look at the details. But I'm pretty sure that almo- almost a hundred percent of that is Class C road money. So it, because that road money is restricted for roads and it's externally restricted by UDOT, then you cannot unrestrict that. You have to spend that on roads. Yep. Sorry, page fourteen. Yeah, right there. All right. So on a, so, and then we have committed or an assigned. You don't have anything committed. But assigned means that you've earmarked or you've assigned or you've encumbered funds for certain purposes already. Um, you'll see that anything that's not in the general fund is either restricted or assigned. So if you look at the capital projects, it's all assigned because it has to be assigned to capital projects. You cannot have unassigned in, in those funds. So the committed and the assigned just means that you've earmarked those. And depending on whether it's committed or assigned, um, de- determines the level of hierarchy to unassign or uncommit those funds. So if they're assigned, then management can just unassign those funds and say, hey, we, we're, we're actually changing the purpose of what we're gonna use those funds for. We're gonna use it for this. If it's committed, it has to come to the, the, the highest level, which would be the council to uncommit those funds. Um, and then unassigned is funds that are open for use, um, however you choose to spend them in the next twelve months. Yeah, and there's also a section in the, in the notes. I think it's like note number one, um, that has descriptions of each of those as well. So you can get a little bit more information on that.
Okay. Anybody else have questions or comments regarding the audit?
This has been really helpful. I know my committee, um, wanted to do some training, not as in-depth maybe as, to, we don't wanna become auditors, right? But if, um, if any of you would be interested in joining, please, um, we'll schedule that and invite you all. And if there's enough, we'll have to notice it. So, or it may become part of our training when we have new people. But it's definitely on our docket for things to do in the next year. So just sharing that.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate your presentation and taking the time to explain it to us. Thank you.
You bet.
Dave would have been here tonight, but he's out of town.
And Shane, item B, the, um, first quarter financial report?
Yes, we've had a lot of finance stuff already, but we just finished the end of the first quarter. So we'll just go through this, uh, quickly. The first, uh, page is just our fund balances there. Um, that's also the, the first page of your full, that fifty-four page or whatever, financial report. On the second page, uh, just, we put end-of-year fund balances in here to be able to create a trend graph. And then I, I threw in the end of the first quarter. Uh, Ryan, if you go to the next one, you can see the, the funds here. Um, you can see our capital improvement fund, you know, we'll do a project that goes down and then it, it will go back up. But there's a lot of those funds that are committed through our budget for this year. Um, and some of those actually will hit the next, the October financial, uh, statement. Because we, you know, two weeks ago, you approved a lot of payments and just with the projects kinda coming to an end, um, for this year. Um, so you can kinda see the, the trends there on the different, uh, aspects of our general fund. Next page, our utility funds. Um, again, there's projects that are planned here. Um, some of these we've kinda saved for different things, uh, pressurized irrigation. Um, I'd have to look and see which project. We're starting a big one right now. So this, this will be impacted quite a bit here soon. Um, the next one is our impact fees. Uh, again, we talked about this last quarter, uh, like with recreation and, uh, street impact fees. We purchased some property and so you see that go down and then we get a little bit of revenue and it starts coming back up. Um, sales tax, uh, you never know what you're gonna get about the twentieth of the month. But, um, our, our second allocation for this fiscal year, um, put us, uh, about five point eight four percent over where we were last year. So we saw some, some good growth there. Next page, just, uh, the same thing, just showing month to month. Um, so everything looks really positive. Um, I think it's great. We have the funds to do a lot of these projects that we're doing. Uh, I was just having a conversation with someone today, uh, looking at some other cities that are doing some curb and gutter projects. And the, the dollars don't stretch as far as they used to. And we probably have curb and gutter on ninety percent of our streets. And a lot of that is projects that we did to rebuild old, original streets. Um, that if we were starting on that process today, I don't know if we'd ever be able to do it. So I think we're fortunate that, uh, the camp, past councils approved those projects and we were able to get them done. Um, unless there's any questions, that's all I really have for tonight. The full financial reports in your packet. Uh, if you have any questions, you feel free to call me with those as well.
Okay. Thank you, Shane. With that, let's move on to, um, action and discussion items. We'll move on to the first item, which is the, um, material change to Alpine City Hall Park Site. Expansion of the Alpine City Fire Station, number two oh two, located at fifty east and one hundred north.
I'm just gonna pull this up too, Mayor, before we jump into that. This is what, uh, this is an updated based off the recommendations from the planning commission. This was, this was given to us yesterday. But, um, the, the architect was good enough to, to hurry and put this together so we could, we could look at this. But, um, yeah, as, as you might have heard, we're looking at updating and expanding our fire station, uh, here at the city hall park. Uh, to do that, the city code requires a public, uh, hearing to be held by the planning commission. And then, uh, a recommendation to be made to you all for a, a final vote on that. Uh, our code requires a super majority vote, so at least four of the five, uh, council members would have to vote in favor of that. Uh, this is a material change, which is either, uh, change of the parks, essential defining characteristics, creation or improvement of roadways or parking lots within the park, or other alterations that affect, affect the existing nature of the park. So that's why it's before you today. Um, we had a public hearing on this. The planning commission is, is included in your staff report. Uh, we had several, several folks get up and comment on this. Neighbors to the east were concerned about the new entrance. Um, which would be, which would be this piece here. Uh, they were, uh, concerned about traffic, lights and noise, uh, and asked that the city look at other, other, uh, entrances there. Either to the west or the south. Let's see, other, others, uh, there was a, a feeling of the, this is needed within the city. But the, the ask was just to look at other ways to, to lay it out, to preserve as much of the park and open space as possible. Um, at the end of the, at the end of the meeting, the planning, or at the end of this discussion, I had the planning commission make three recommendations to the city council. They made a, a motion to recommend approval, um, with, with a couple of recommendations. We talked last time we discussed this in city council about, uh, potentially using some of the, the bricks of, of some of the older homes in, in Alpine that have been demolished or that could be, uh, taken out as part of this, is having some kind of legacy wall or, or some kind of historic, uh, features included in that. Uh, the Lehigh Public Safety Building was used as an example. They've done, they've done something with that as well. Uh, just consider the inputs from the residents on the east that had concerns about the entrance. Um, and then they, uh, originally, uh, this, this south part of the new parking lot had eight additional parking spots. Uh, they recommended to remove that to, to just lessen the impact a little bit on, on that site there. Again, uh, well, the planning commission looked at, it was included in your packet, but this was an updated one based on those recommendations, uh, from them. Uh, the public hearing was held, uh, by the planning commission. You guys don't have to do that, uh, tonight. Um, and yeah, I, any questions or feedback that we can give you on this, we'd be happy to do so.
I think the original plan was for more like sixteen plus parking spots. And then they recommended it, paring it down to about eight, right?
Yeah. Yep. So there, there's eight on the top and there's eight, eight down here, so about sixteen.
Pared that down.
And my understanding was that would, that would be used exclusively for firefighters that, uh, they just needed to have enough for, uh, to do a shift change. Um, so that was, that was reasoning there.
And we could put up a sign saying fire department, parking only and visitors and guests only.
We have the parking lot to the north here that they, they use now has similar signs that say Alpine City Staff and, uh, Fire Department, uh, firefighters only. So we could probably do something similar.
And those shift changes, Chief Patton, generally your morning, seven AM or so, they do a shift change?
Yes, seven AM.
So there's really not a lot of traffic going in there other than the shift change. And that would be the ingress point for your apparatus.
Yeah.
To come back to the station. So that would be, if they were turning off of one hundred east, they would be turning toward the station. Not headlights or anything into those houses to the east.
No, that, the, the headlights will still go out the way they go out today.
No, I know that's for the, that's for the exit, but for the coming back, they would turn back to the west. So it wouldn't really shine to the neighbors to the east.
Yes.
Specifically on this, this east parking lot, because it was, um, there was a lot of discussion about that in our public hearing and from our residents. Um, we talked to the, the person on our committee, Chief Patton, who's, who's on our committee or Shane? Who's the firefighter with us?
Uh, Chief Beck.
Chief Beck, thank you. Sorry, that name didn't come back to me. But, um, he talked about, uh, I'm like, well, who comes in and out of the fire station? Cause it doesn't seem like the public would. But he said occasionally people will come in, um, with questions or things. And so, uh, there's those two, the eight are there, but there's also these two that are parallel, um, just for visitors that are coming in for a variety of reasons. And the primary concern they had was that they're secure, that they can't just wander through the station. And so this bottom right corner, um, would be the entrance, the primary entrance. And then they, there's a door there that, um, I'm sure there'd be a bell or something. I'm not sure how. But to secure anybody so they couldn't just wander through, um, the fire station. So that's, um, the use on the, on the east side. And then, um, this circle, it's not really clear, but this circle is a giant tree that, um, we felt like was worth preserving because mature trees are valuable. And, um, so that is what the circle is. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, um, personal is the personal opinion, so I'll leave it at that. But because our firefighters are there twenty-four seven, um, that they get the advantage of the north and the east views, which are superior to the west and south views. So anyways, that would be more glass there, um, on the north and east. And in also into their community areas, like the weight room and the, um, the training room. I'm not sure what you'd call that. So that there's lots of light in there, cause we all know that natural light is, helps us to stay healthy.
Do you have a question regarding, did you say that they needed eight spaces? Cause there's total of eight parking spaces right now, including the two at the bottom.
Well, they just need that for the shift change? Is that right, Chief Patton? I don't wanna misquote you. Okay. So visitors don't really come in at seven AM?
Right, no, no, no.
Yeah. I'm just saying that in addition to the regular four or five cars, there could be a handful of visitors. I was just pointing out that the visitors would access the fire station from this same lot. But there's like one or two people. It's not like crowds of people are coming in at, to the fire station at any time.
Typically short periods of time, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, we have tours and stuff like that where we'll get multiple vehicles that come, but.
But they could always use the bigger lot. And come around the front of the building. So another advantage of this, where we ended up as a committee is, um, I think Jessica spoke to this, how, you know, our firefighters are dealing with crisis situations. And they don't need to be necessarily, um, interacting with the public. And so that there's a separation from all the public use on the civic side of the building. So there's no more shared space or even, um, shared driveway or anything like that. In addition to the apparatus being like dangerous, as it's not dangerous, but it's just, it needs to be able to move freely. Like if somebody accidentally parked in their spot, so it's all gated off. And that's, uh, this is an advantage is because there's complete separation between the fire station, which has very specific, um, needs. And then the public could be coming through if they're use, utilizing the addition. They, um, over there on the left and they don't necessarily overlap the usage of the parking lots. So that's kind of what we were thinking. And, and then also like, I think that the, um, like I was talking about the north and east, they've activated the outdoor space. Again, it's healthy like to be outside. The firefighters are there twenty-four seven. And then I, um, we tried to create a way to activate outdoor usage on the civic side. Cause that's a nice inviting area. And with the driveway separating them again, it would feel like they're not, you know, in the fire station space. They're, there's very distinct spaces.
Can I ask a question on that? Just so, I was in that meeting with Chief Beck, but, um, A- Andy Spencer sent out the email that gave an alternate option coming through. Is the reason why that that wasn't discussed or moved forward because of the separation that they wanna have?
Yeah, it would be hard. Well, somebody else speak to that. Cause.
When we discussed that, Chief Beck had said that that was a concern of theirs, moving those large fire trucks through civic area. You know, a child's playing in the park and then here comes the fire truck coming back. I mean, there's just a lot of, it adds, I think, risk factor. And then also, again, if they're coming back from a stressful situation, it's like, oh, here's the, here's our safety district. But maybe they need some time to collect themselves.
So A- Andy's proposal, it didn't go through the park per se, but it went through the parking lot over there on the northwest side. Um, is that still cutting with, there's gonna be people in that area, kids crossing the road, that's why?
And then another, I think another part of the concern is, you know, you have an event at the community center side. And, you know, a larger van and traffic kind of parking where they shouldn't, where, you know, like a school event or whatever. People just park where they kinda find a place. And there could be those conflicts as well. Plus getting in that far east, or sorry, west bay, um, you know, there's the outside radius. But the inside radius would be important too for a, a long apparatus like they deal with.
We really can't move the, the, the approach on the west to the south. So for us to come in like we are right now, we don't have enough room to make that swing right now. So in Andy's drawing, where we're looking at parking stalls even further, we'd be coming, we'd have to come into the park probably twenty-five feet south of where we are right now to put parking stalls, plus get the radius enough to turn. Which would put, I mean, that would, just because we can't, with that building right there on the corner, the corner of the approach, we can't bring that approach south.
Yeah, the relic haul is, do you see what he's saying? We can't move the approach south to make a nice clean turn because the relic haul is there. So.
We also have plans for the sculpture garden there that, that would significantly reduce the area, I think, for the sculpture garden. And that makes sense to me. I, I have another question regarding more the development code and how it plays into this. So today we're voting on, um, whether to approve, approve the material change that's happening. And it says it's based on the, the project as proposed. We have two, um, concept plans in here. And, but then also in our next meeting on the November eleventh, we're going to be talking about the concept plan as well. When we approve the material change here, um, based on the current project as proposed, are we approving the concept plan? Cause this is a constant plan. I mean, I'm trying to understand a little bit what it means by as proposed.
I mean, I think, you know, some things are gonna change a little bit, but essentially you're approving changing the use from park to having a building there.
Yeah, just the impact on the park itself is all the, all the planning commission looked at. Uh, in, in your staff report, and I, I failed to mention this, but it's, it's worth bringing up. You'll have future agenda items as far as like the architectural design, as far as things like that, to make sure it complies with that gateway historic, uh, district. This is just the impact on the park.
So the material change can obviously include like, um, improvements in roadways and parking lots. And that's what we're. So the material change can obviously include like improvements in roadways and parking lots, and that's what we're talking about here. But, but when we approve a material change, does that mean we can put the parking lot and roads wherever we want on a future meeting, or is it tied at all to our motion right now when we say as proposed?
I, I would, I would say it's generally as shown on this concept plan. You know what I mean? So, so kind of that northeast quadrant of the block, essentially. Well, like, it kind of does go over the northwest too with, with the parking lot, but thinking of the building here.
And how does that parking lot pan to it? Do we make, is this, is this potentially including tearing down the house and putting a parking lot there, or, or we, I'm trying to understand what, if we right now, when we make a, approve the material aspect of it, if it's locked into something at all, or if it could include simply coming in from the east, or it can tear down that whole building? What, what, what leeway do we have after this based on approving this motion?
Well, I think there's, I think there's some leeway, but, you know, as the architects turn it away, trying to get to a point of actually putting the plans together that this thing will be built from, you know, we need to solidify the plan at some point, which we're hoping to do on November eleventh. Um, they needed a little more time, can have it ready today. But I would just say generally, I mean, we've had multiple iterations, but they've all been somewhat similar to this. So I would say it's the change of use of that north part of the block.
And on our, on our November eleventh meeting, where we're gonna talk about a concept plan, is, I mean, a lot of this right now is just layout, you know?
Yeah.
But are we gonna talk more about the building at that point?
Yes.
Whereas we just kind of approved the layout for the traffic and parking here.
Yeah.
The November, November eleventh meeting is more to talk about the building, is that right?
Yeah, so the process we went through, we, we put out those, uh, concept,
Right.
There were three of them to get kind of thoughts flowing and everything, and, and we took input. Now the architect, Chad Littlewood, is working to incorporate those comments into that plan. But you kind of have to narrow down and have a floor plan to be able to show what the outside of the building would look like. And so, um, yeah, if there's any major concerns with this floor plan, now to be the time, otherwise we'd have a hard time having them prepare what the outside of the building would look like and the roof lines and everything for the November meeting.
Again, if we have two concept plans in our packet right now that both have different parking layouts, do we need to, in our motion, potentially say we approve one over the other and take a vote on that?
So what happened with that? We took that, uh, feedback, looking for the feedback by last Wednesday. Then we met Thursday afternoon, kind of brought all of this together. And then he generated this, uh, drawing that's on the screen right now, that came, it was after the packet, right? Or was it in the packet?
It's in the packet.
This one is in the packet.
This one's, okay.
Well, both of them are in the packet.
This one's, this one's.
It's in the, yeah, it's in the latest updated packet.
Yeah, so that's the reason.
This is as of Monday, but we, when we were meeting, it was a completely different ver, not completely. And we modified it from that to this.
Just the Monday one?
That's, yeah, that's where, where we have two rows of parking on the east side, which we've completely eliminated, like, eight, eight stalls, like the planning commission recommended, based on public feedback.
But Monday, the Monday one didn't include the parking in the place of the old home right over here as well?
No, no, this is the Monday, where, Ryan has is our very latest version on the screen.
Shane, I have a question about the parking on the east.
Can I have both?
Are we even addressing that because, I'm sorry, on the west? Cause that's not a designated park or open space, so this actually wouldn't apply to that.
Yeah, it's, I don't know if you call it a gray area, I mean, the city's owned the property for twenty-five years. I don't know if it actually shows on our open space plan, but we kind of treated it that way, but that, I've had the same thought.
But I'm speaking specifically to what we're looking at today.
The house, actually.
Right, right.
Is it, is the super majority required because it's now a public facility zone for that zoning change we made?
No, it's, it's part of our open space ordinance.
So that corner lot is not open space, right?
It's not.
Is this, so is this an official park, or is it just open space? It's not a named park though, right?
It's always just been called City Hall Park or City Park, yeah.
It is a park.
So.
It is a park?
Yep.
I did want to point out as well, because I was advocating in a, in a previous meeting, that we needed to accommodate the seating here, um, these, as if we were, this was gonna be the primary use of the building. But really, you know, even on our current schedule, we only use it three times a year as, um, for our senior dinners. And so we, as a committee, we just sort of like backed away from trying to maximize the parking on the lot, on the, in the park, and intruding on the park. But minimize the number of stalls we would be using, and everyone felt good about that. We've been in a different planning meeting on our small area plan, and they, they have this little phrase, "You don't plan for Easter." Meaning you don't pl- plan your whole city as, or it's like, you could give the example of Provo City. They don't plan their entire city around the Fourth of July, even though the Fourth of July is a big part of their city. But they don't, you know, plan extra wide streets and all that, just cause there's all this stuff going on. So we feel like this is the minimum, or with a different frame of mind, that we're, we've meant, not minimized, I don't want to use that word. We've optimized parking for the real use of the civic side and not for, like, the very wor, I don't want to say the worst. The day where we have the most people using this building is like overkill on parking. We, we cut weight, we cut back a lot of stalls because it's really not gonna be used, so. It's kind of like saying, like, do we make our schools build enough stalls for grandparents' day? No. So it's kind of like the same situation.
For Alpine Days.
For Alpine Days, yeah. So, you know what I'm saying? Like, we don't have to have enough stalls as if we're feeding people daily there, which, cause we're not going to be doing that.
And just for clarity, um, this, this was all started well before the, I've been serving for two years, this was all kind of started well before that. My understanding, maybe you can confirm that, is we received a grant for, specifically for a senior center. So this is being, was it?
Um, well, we...
We're calling it a senior center, but it's gonna be more of a community center.
It is.
It has the events.
Yeah, we're starting off with a senior center, cause it, it is easier, there's certain grants, I'm hoping to, um, MAG has, MAG and, um, has certain branches that we can get certain materials, especially for the warming kitchen, and then also a grant from another party. And then we do have the quarter million dollar donation for this side of the building. But yeah, it's not, it, they're not huge, huge grants, but they don't have grants like that for community centers, they only have it for senior centers.
So the intent is to use this for the senior events and additional community events?
I think eventually it might be turned into that, but yes, but for now, it will be, for all intents and purposes, a senior center for our community until otherwise specified.
Just listening to the public feedback, I just started taking notes that, um, it was a long night, that night, I don't know if you guys listened to the whole thing. Luckily I was working, so it just kept me busy churning through numbers while I had something interesting to listen to. Cause numbers don't have opinions or feelings, just so you know. Okay, anyways, I wrote down ten things that were sort of our goals for the fire station, and we like clicked off ten yeses, and then the civic center, I call it, but we're calling it a, it's going to be a senior center. There was twelve things, and the only thing that is sort of left in the air is, um, something I'll bring up in a minute. And then what were the park features? And there was four things, like maximize certain spaces, leave the tree, things like that. Um, minimize the traffic on the east side because to protect the residents on that side. And so we, um, clicked off four of those. And then, um, the planning commission had three recommendations, which I wanted to bring up as well. So I just feel like we've, that our architect has worked really hard to accommodate more than like thirty requests in this one small space. So I was pretty impressed when they were also able to turn this around so quickly.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, can I get to my questions then? I was saying all the positive before we did the negatives.
Okay.
Negatives, okay. So I wondered, because I'm sort of an outdoorsy person, um, and, and all Alpine is, considering how much resources we put into trails, could we, would you guys feel it would be worth our while to extend the south side of the civic area? And because it's going into the park and bringing it up today, um, and so that we could put like four or five tables out there? Or do you feel like that we'd rather have green space? What would be their input here?
I mean, with the tables, that's all secondary, right? I think...
Yeah, we'd extend the concrete so you could have, I mean, I'm just question, I'm just asking.
Isn't that the area of the sculpture garden?
Currently it's the area where the driveway, where the driveway comes in.
The sculpture garden is not hard fast yet, because they knew that we were, they're kind of waiting for this, just like the architect is waiting.
But isn't where the sculpture garden went is, to Shane's point, it's a concrete space.
As, as it was proposed originally.
Correct, that is, yes, that's correct.
Chrissy, I'd, I'd be in favor of leaving it the way it is and, and looking at how it starts to get used, and then maybe you want to put a covered pavilion with picnic tables, or maybe you want to leave it that way so you can do little outdoor movies or whatever, you know, so I don't know, I would, I would say do it the way it is, and then see how, start to see how it starts to get used, and then make adjustments, leave that space so you can make later adjustments.
I think that's a great idea.
Anybody else have an opinion? What's your next question?
Okay, the other one was on the microphone.
Thank you. Yeah, when you, when you listen to the public hearings, you realize with no microphone, you don't hear anything, okay? The other thing was the planning commission has talked about using the bricks inside or in some way with the civic side of the building, is that what we understood, was their request? And I was thinking that, um, we have like a, a monument, like in the Legacy Park, or we have, like, uh, somebody pointed out, was that you, Brent, that on the property of Purple, the Purple Building? There's like a map of what used to be there, it's on a monument, maybe that was Ryan, Ryan, was that you? So I was thinking it would be, uh, more visible or more, if, if we did anything, that I would rather see it outside of the building rather than in, because the little house really has nothing to do with the fire station. And so if we did something, we should do it outside and, and remove that as a, a request in our, um, moving forward. That's my own opinion.
If a motion is made to approve this, do we have to address the recommendations from the planning commission? We don't, right? We would have to add that to our motion as a, as a condition or change.
Does anybody else have any other comments or questions?
Well, Chrissy was concerned about the tables moving in and out of the storage room, and I think a
Oh, that's right.
simple way to address that is just have, add another door, so it's a double door.
I think we're gonna talk about the building in our next, we're kind of talking about the park right now.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, I feel like the park is the last thing, it's like, let's get moving on the building. The park, the specifics of it, we can address in the next year and a half.
Oh, I thought that's why we were voting tonight was on the park, kind of like Jason's question.
No, the question, what we're voting on tonight is that we are changing it from an open space and putting a structure on it.
Oh, okay.
Which is the fire station addition.
Okay.
And that's why when Shane mentioned that we needed a super majority, cause we're making a material change from a park or grass to putting a structure on it.
I, in my mind, anything outdoors is what we're voting on tonight, but you're saying there's little modifications along the way?
Yeah, no, this is just...
Okay, got it. Then I won't get down to the nitty gritty.
I mean, I, is, that's what I'm understanding, correct, Shane?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause I heard differently, but okay, if that's where, if what we're saying is there's a material change that we're allowing it to happen, but anything can happen in the future, based on future councils, that's a different thing than what I thought we were talking a second ago about.
So talking about like taking some of the old bricks and making a monument, that's really not part of what we're doing tonight. But, but the area where this building will be is generally would be part of that consideration to change the use from park to a structure.
And we're putting a, you know, parking lot in it, so that's also a material change.
So we're basically approving this footprint?
Yeah.
Yes.
Taking, taking part of the park and... But we're, but we're making the, we're, we're agreeing to do, um, this material change based on something that's proposed and is tied to a specific proposal. That's the thing I'm not understanding from what Carla's saying. I would think that if we maybe, something came up and we decided to move the, the driveway to the south, for example, I think that would require, we'd have to amend or do it totally different.
You would need another super majority vote.
But I would agree.
So, I mean, that can happen. But we're just basically approving this footprint.
The only reason...
Changes material from that, we would have to have a new, um, agenda item.
The, the only reason the bricks were brought up is because they were talking about tearing down that, that house that's currently there, so that was just part of, part of the change that was being proposed, so that's what they wanted to see.
And couldn't the approval be conditioned upon this proposed plan? So that also adds another layer of clarification. So it moves it from what council member Thielen is discussing, which is, well, then anything goes, to it's approved conditioned upon this proposal.
And at a later time, to Councilman Romer's point, it can always change, but it has to come back as another material change at a later event.
If it's material.
I mean, what, what I would suggest is within these setbacks that are shown, at least, especially on the north and east, like within that area basically, and, you know, considering that tree on the corner there, like a building very similar to this in that area is how I'd look at it, because the architecture's not far enough down the road to nail it down, I mean, it could change a foot or whatever. And I, I think that would be within reason of the approval that we're seeking tonight. Does that make sense?
Kind of. I mean, it's all, it's talking about just the building and expanding the building out there, but we're making a material change vote today on parking and roads.
Yes.
And so the roads that we're doing here are attached to this particular concept plan, of which we're approving. And specifically, I mean, I don't have this particular one in the packet, I didn't get a link for it, but I have the two ones that are on the Adobe. This isn't even the same one as those two that are in, on the link to the Adobe, so what do we call this particular concept plan versus, if we were to, in the motion, say as proposed in the concept plans?
So Steve and I were just talking about this, I think if you just said the latest version or as, and like I said, this, this wasn't, in the, in the packet, we said a future one would be coming out, just cause the architect was trying to get it done before. So I, I think, and Steve can correct me, I'm wrong, if you just said the latest version.
I think we should though have a, an, like a date as of...
Yeah, you could, you could say as of the ten, what was yesterday, the twenty-seventh, ten twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five version?
Yeah, I, I think that would be better, cause I'd...
You could also say the latest versions presented to the council.
Yeah, okay.
Because this is the one you've been discussing, and we have it, we know what that is.
And I agree with Brent, if we, you know, came in November and, and said, hey, that part, that driveway needs to go to the south, to Center Street, I would agree that would need to come back.
Cause that's material. If, if we're just making adjustments because of, like, the architect used the word, um, frozen, there is a point where we have to freeze the plan and make no more changes so that they can get cost estimates and get everything bid out. And we're not to the frozen stage, to be silly, I said we're at Jell-O. So like, it can jiggle a little, but it's molded, like this is it, and then we're gonna get frozen.
I think what Shane was referring to though is like, you know, it's important that we preserve that tree. And yes, we think that's where it is, but we haven't had the, um, yeah, we haven't had the survey dance, we don't know exactly, and that's why he's saying, you know, there might be a foot or two difference. I think the general plan, going with the latest, dated what, yesterday, the twenty-seventh? That's what we're approving, the material change, basically, which is the addition of a driveway, parking lot, and the structure itself in the park.
And the, are we, are we voting, because the, generally, the, um, the old, the old house on the northwest corner wasn't part of the park, because it was a building, we, we need, that, is that in this plan, in this motion? Yes, or no?
It's part of the plan, but I don't think it requires the super majority vote, because it, it really wasn't an open space area. And isn't as it sits today.
But as long as we're voting, if we include it, there's not, no harm, but it's not required, I see.
Okay, is there anyone ready to propose a motion?
I will.
Okay.
Hope you can, Brent? I move to approve the material change proposed to the City Hall Park to allow for the expansion of the current Alpine Fire Station number two zero two. Project as proposed, the latest version presented to the City Council today, and...
Dated?
Dated ten twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five.
Dated ten twenty seven, twenty twenty five, providing a general footprint for the proposed improvements.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been proposed by Councilman Rumler, seconded by Councilman Thielen. Any questions?
Do we need to add any, any comment about the setbacks or is?
No, it's already outlined on.
I think they're listed on the drawing, so since it references that, I think it ties it in.
Any other questions? Okay, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes. Brent Rumler, yes.
Jessica Smoyn, yes.
Okay. The fire station, um, oh, are we doing the concept design today?
Um, it's, it's more for discussion just as we work towards our November eleventh meeting. If there's any additional feedback on floor plan or anything like that, um, we'd, we'd love to have it.
Does anybody have any additional input from, um, the concept plans that were sent out? I know they've had some feedback, um, in the last couple of days or in the last week. Did you get a chance to look at it, Kelly?
Yeah.
I just, did you, is that represented on, what we just approved on the footprint? Is the architect, did he update the plan too on that same document?
Yeah.
Based on, yeah.
I like, the only questions I have is at the top, um, of the senior center, those are two handicap parking stalls?
I believe so.
That are right there? And then is there a way to? Where would, so someone's bringing a bunch of stuff, meals and decorations or whatever. Where would they pull up to unload all that?
Right here.
Just right along the curb right here?
See, there's a door right at that vestibule.
Yeah, but if I'm bringing in stuff for the kitchen, I'm not going to bring it in there, right? Because the kitchen's now at the top, or before it was at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and there's another exterior door right there shown.
Yeah.
And, and that's a detail that they would work through in the access because it is something that was discussed. You know, how to unload supplies and different things for, for an event.
Yeah, so that's, that, my only feedback is just make sure there's a, some kind of loading, unloading type.
Yeah.
And I feel like the new layout itself, it's a little disappointing when we're talking about the views to the north and to the east, that everything's been brought to the back. Is there a reason that it was swapped?
The architect actually said there weren't really sightlines.
Oh, there weren't. Is it because of the, the, because of the small house in front?
It, it because of the, we're keeping the door and the windows because of the angle, the, just everything. He said, you're really not going to have mountain view. So maximizing the park from a site plan.
Is better.
I think he, yeah, made sense to him. The few, the couple of details, and you said we're going to talk about this later, now there's not an entrance door that goes into the greeting area on the fire station. We could face it east if we choose to. And then you just come in off the east if that's what we need. I'm just, that door can happen either place.
Yeah.
And then secondly, on the fencing, it doesn't really, are we going to get into material detail about that fencing that goes around, um, the fire station side?
I don't think at this point. I think maybe when it comes back with the, um, architectural,
Okay.
that side of it.
And then just that other little detail that Chrissy called out to solve, um, loading and unloading, simply just add a second door.
Yeah, and, and when the, when the civil engineer gets his hands on the, the parking lot and working through that, they may move that ADA parking.
And that was, that was going to be my comment is, I just thought of it. So we're, we're, we're encouraging the main entrance for the senior center to be on that west side. So it might be better to move the parking stalls all the way up to the end and have the, have the drive through on the west side, and then you can have the ADA spots right by the door.
And I'm thinking what Chad was thinking is have a drop off. So if you pull through and have a drop off right at the door, I'll bet that's why he put it that way. But it's, it's something to think about for sure.
Because there are a handful of people that do get dropped off at these luncheons, whether it's the bus from the senior center or, or, um, senior living or, um, just their kids dropping the parents off.
Is there going to be an entrance exit on that one hundred north?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah, that's right.
I just didn't.
That just goes to the warming kitchen though. I don't think that's a public entrance.
I, I think you're talking a vehicular entrance, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, a vehicular entrance, okay.
Jason, do you have any input?
No, I like them. I think Shane's right. It's all subjective as to what people think.
Yeah.
It's historic and, and beautiful. But I thought, I thought the plans they put out were all nice. I like a little more the square, like personally than the angled roofs, but that's just my opinion. It's not right.
Yeah, no, I think the hard thing was that we've got a bunch of different types of roofs, you know, for the bays, it's, you know, pitched and then so I don't understand why we have a mansard roof for our current side.
Like the, uh, equipment is up there, like mechanical.
Oh, to height, okay. Because I'm like, why are we doing that? But, so he was trying to incorporate what we have to save on costs. So that was kind of, um, a hindrance and, and it's just hard when you have to deal with existing and then you have a new building and kind of have that all come together. You know, we toyed with the idea, you know, should we just start new, but then you're adding two to three million dollars on top of what we're already, is, whatever is already estimated. So, um, yeah, so I think whatever input you have will be greatly appreciated. And then we could move forward with it and hopefully we'll have those in a couple of weeks to be able to look at.
Okay, yeah, Kelly reminded me, I was mis, misreading here that to get tables in and out, I, I thought it should be a direct shot into the big room instead of trying to turn that corner. That was my feedback and that's all I really have for the interior of the building. Because, yeah. We did ask about the, the views and the architect said there's just not, they're just not there.
My, my mind went that direction as well and I finally made it over there today and there's like the house and that huge tree. You really can't see the mountain from there.
Yeah, you're too close, I feel like.
But I agree with you. I know, so when I was looking at this, I was thinking of, I don't know if you guys have been in the public safety, um, building in Lehigh? But they have a big room like this and you're right, like, because I'm like, they have a huge co, you know, congregating area basically that they also lease out. But their storage area does come, you don't have to make a right turn. It comes straight out and it has, you know, it has all their tables, all their chairs, and that's where they keep it. I think that would, that could be problematic coming in and out at that angle.
Yeah, for people who move a lot of chairs.
Yeah.
I, I move chairs and tables so often. Yeah, Polynesians, you could, they have big parties.
Well, especially the big round ones.
You don't want, every little current turn is just a, a traffic jam too, if you have a lot of people helping. But what happened to the radio room though? Now that I'm looking even more closely?
It's there?
Where, is that the little closet?
Didn't we have a radio room for our ham radio operators?
Labeled. I think it's this small one right there. It gets smaller and smaller every, no.
No, yeah, I don't, I don't know what happened to it, but I knew, I thought that that was a good location for it where it was, you know, that it's accessible and didn't we want it accessible from the fire department? Is that not? That was just not going to, we can't have everything, guys. We, we can have a list of thirty items and only get thirty two, I mean thirty out of thirty two.
Well, and the command center will probably be in this room, so it needs to be close. But I still, for me, it's the steps from the kitchen to the serving area is problematic going through the restrooms.
Hmm.
Do you know what I mean? It's.
But we, we, we want exterior, exterior access.
Again, it's still always, if you look at where we're doing it right now, it's just right outside the kitchen.
We, we can, I mean, I'm sure you can look at it. I think that's a good point.
But do you know what I mean? It just, the serving area should be, I think, closer to the kitchen without having to traverse the restrooms.
Yeah, and if we do enter the warming kitchen from where all the parking is, that would also, to, to Brent's point, like, or anyone like, it's not as far. But anyways, yeah, those are good, that's good feedback. I think that's what I mean by Jell-O stage. Like, I think we can move things around internally and like optimize the space, but they need a footprint, right? And if there is strong opposition to like having out, access, access to the outdoors and stuff like that's something they would build into the plan and be a lot of work to just take it back out if we didn't want it.
Okay, any other input? Okay. Um, if you guys do have any suggestions, please, um, make sure, I'm sure Chad will send out another link or an email. You guys can put your input into the new thing and then we will need to firm it up or freeze it because we do, um, we'll have contractors on soon and we'll be moving forward. Okay, um, let's move on to item three, Fire Station two oh two.
Okay, so we recently received RFPs for, uh, construction management, general contractor service, construction manager, general contract services, uh, for the fire station project. Uh, we received thirteen bids, uh, which according to Navigate, that's, that's awesome for a project of this size and everything and, oh, we had some great proposals. Uh, they were ranked on various criteria and we narrowed it down to three contractors and then, uh, did interviews with those three. And coming out of that with all things considered, um, the, uh, recommendation was to go with CIR construction. Um, included here, uh, as part of the staff report. I cut and pasted this right out of their proposal, their cost proposal fee. Um, so right now with the pre-construction, uh, fee, all work up in that pre-construction period would be at no charge to the city. Uh, they'd have a construction management fee of a little over two hundred and thirty-three thousand. They had cost of the bonds that's just over twenty-nine thousand, and this table was required to be filled out by all contractors. Change order markup, five point four nine percent for work added or deducted. This particular contractor would not self-perform any work. So the way this CMCG process works is that general contractor will do the bidding like we normally would do on our projects and get competitive bids for all the different trades and aspects of the project. And then their general conditions, um, they had it just over three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that totals, uh, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand, twenty-two dollars. Um, they have, uh, completion, uh, scheduled for the project for March of twenty-seven. We worked through an agreement form, um, both with Navigate, my comments and, uh, Steve, and also the general conditions. And so those are, are, um, documents that would be signed and be part of our contract with our general contractor. And I think those got sent out in the second packet yesterday. There's some kind of weird little protection on those that it wouldn't let them be combined into our large PDF. Um, so that's why they did not make it in the packet Friday. We also included CIR's full proposal. These guys are really excited. They, they built the, out the bank down here. They've done a ton of projects, um, all over the state and, and outside the state. Have a really good reputation and, um, come highly recommended from us and Preston's here from Navigate as well. And if you have any questions for him, he's here, so.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to.
Can I just make one comment? I think the reason we want to freeze is to avoid the change orders. That's my only comment.
Okay, I move to award the Alpine Fire Station number two oh two addition remodel project. Construction manager, general contractor service to, services to CIR construction and approve the contract documents.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilman Law. Um, Chrissy, did you have a comment? I didn't see you were going to wait.
That was it.
Oh, that was it, okay. Any, anything else? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes. Brent Rumler, yes.
Jessica Smoyn, yes.
Okay, ordinance passes. Let's move on to item E, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-three, the rezone. Are we, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. I crossed out one too many. Okay, I'm sorry, item D, item twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Yep, this is just a, a code amendment that was proposed to, to be brought before you guys. Um, right now in our, uh, business commercial zone, you can have, uh, quarter acre lots in that zoning, um, very similar to what we have in the TR ten thousand zone. What this proposal would do is, is remove, uh, single family dwelling units out of permitted and conditional uses in that zone. If someone were, if this wouldn't impact, if someone has a home in the business commercial zone right now, this wouldn't impact them at all. They could continue on, uh, you know, forever. Uh, and then there's a process if they ever wanted to expand or enlarge their home, that they would just have to go through in order to do that. Um, is a, it would be considered illegal non-conforming use. So what this does, um, every time we get a proposal for a business commercial zone, uh, change, the, the, the fear is always brought up that well, if, you know, anything that, if we rezone it a business commercial, anything in the permitted or conditional uses is, is fair game at that point. Um, there's always the concern that well, if, you know, they, they bring a proposal and it's a business commercial use, if that doesn't work out, now they have quarter acre zoning. Uh, so that's always an issue that's, that's brought up, uh, when, when these are in there. So what this would do would take those, uh, uh, single family dwelling out of that zone as a permitted and conditional use. And it also creates an overlay zone. So if someone was in the business commercial zone and wanted to do residential, uh, they would just go through a rezone process to this, this new zone that we would create. The, the planning commission looked at this, uh, I think this was the last item on a four and a half hour meeting. Um, so it was, it was a good one to end on, but, um, they looked at it. Uh, the reason we went with the, we, we had two discussion items on this. We could either say you just rezone to whatever residential is around you. But there are several parcels on Main Street that don't, don't abut any residential. So if they were to come in and say, we want to, we want to rezone this, it, it, uh, brings up spot zoning issues. So we thought an overlay zone was a good way to address that and that's what's being presented. Uh, Steve was good enough to provide us with an example that they use in West Bountiful. So we took that example for the overlay zone and modified it to, to kind of meet what, what we have here in Alpine. So uh, no public hearing. That was done at the planning commission meeting. That was the only agenda item we didn't have public comment on, so it wasn't a whole lot of, most people dropped out by then, but um, we did have that opportunity there. Um, so that's, that's met that requirement. Yeah, I think that's all we have. Uh, any questions or, or comments, I'd be happy to address those. We're not tied, uh, Councilman Rumler, uh, spoke to us too. We're not tied to the name of the, of the zone too. You can change it to whatever we want. We just kind of looked around and that one seemed the best of all of the, that we saw, so.
Are there any questions for Ryan?
We had discussed with the group that came through, looking at, would this be a mixed use area? So what was the decision to go this direction?
It's detached.
Just dealing with the detachment.
Single family homes, detached, single family homes is all this would impact.
I think this could alleviate some concerns on certain projects too. For example, the senior housing overlay zone, uh, is only applicable where there's, uh, the BC or business commercial zone. So in, in some of these past projects, and it's not, it just happens to be on here tonight, but there's been a concern of rezoning a property commercial from say a CR forty thousand or one acre zone to the business commercial and then maybe that senior housing project is moving forward, but then they pull back, but they already have the business commercial zone and then they could build quarter acre, uh, have quarter acre lots in there. So it would add a layer to that. So, it would add a layer to that and kind of protect that, that situation. For example, the project that was down on Alpine Highway that was proposed, south of the heart center.
We did, so we, yeah, great point Shane. To that too, we currently allow in this zone that you can have, if you look at the links in King's Lot, there's a, a commercial building in the front and a residential in the back. We still left that in there, so if someone were to propose, you know, something similar, that's still possible. This would just take out a straight, single-family detached residential unit subdivision out of this zone, unless they come in with the overlay.
Yeah, I think the main thing is because of what's happened with the legislature, once it's rezoned, the city council will never see it again. It's all administrative. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I can make a motion. I'll move to approve ordinance two zero two five dash two four, the proposed code amendment to the business commercial zone and creation of the town center residential overlay zone as presented.
Is there a second?
I can second.
It's been moved by Councilman Rumler, seconded by Councilwoman Hanneman. Any further discussion?
What are, Ryan or Shane, like, what are some of the unforeseen consequences that you've contemplated as part of this change?
Yeah, so I think what this does is it kind of takes away some of those. Every time, every, since the three years that I've been here, every time there's a proposal for a rezone, one of the fears that's brought up is, well, you know, we, we rezone this to business commercial, they could also have these, most of them are in the CR forty or CR twenty. So, there's, there's one, for example, that's a five acre lot that's often looked at as, and requested to be rezoned. The big fear in that is, if it's one acre zoning now and they want to do homes, it's essentially five lots on a five acre. If they were to rezone business commercial, the business aspect doesn't work out. Now, we're, they could have twenty homes on there in, in a quarter acre zoning. So, I think that's what we're trying to do. And if, if, where it's legislative decision, it's a rezone. If something comes in and it doesn't, doesn't fit right, doesn't, you know, the council doesn't think that it feeds, meets the vision of the community in what we've done, that's an easy, easy rejection that you guys can do. This, this also preserves some commercial too. Alpine's primarily a bedroom community. We've, we've seen that. In the Main Street plan that we're working on, it, it, there's a cool bar graph on there that shows this is the type of zoning that you have in business commercials, very, very low. So, this just kind of saves a little business commercial area that we have left where, you know, we've, where that makes sense.
From what I understood, it's kind of like our, and Ryan pointed this out, that it's kind of like our public facility zoning, whereas it doesn't mean it could never happen, but it just needs to come through us again. And because we took, the, the state legislature in streamlining their approval process, many steps are sort of eliminated and it just brings us back into the process. And it doesn't mean it can never happen. It's just, it will come to us first. And otherwise, it'd be completely out of the process.
Another, another layer of protection, Councilmember Law, is this requires a development agreement. And that would have to be approved by the city council, so you still have some oversight there.
Kelly, the thing that, Councilmember Law, the thing that, you know, keeps me awake on this is that if someone does have a home in this zone right now, it now is illegal non-conforming use. If they ever wanted to add on to that or, or do that with this in the way our legal non-conforming code is written, they would have to just take extra steps to come in and get, get approval through. That's on anything, any legal non-conforming use. If you want to expand the use of where the building, you have to go through Planning Commission, City Council to do that. So, it just adds a little extra steps. If someone wanted to do it, a, a simple addition to their home, that would, that would come into play as well.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's proceed with the roll call vote.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes. Bren Rumler, yes.
Jessica Smoyn, yes.
Okay, now we'll move on to item E.
Yep, so this is a, a proposed rezone request. It's at two forty-two and two forty-three East Red Pine Drive. Currently, and we'll, we'll get to the zoning map on here that kind of makes, makes it make sense. But currently, there's, there's two lots. There's one full lot is zoned CR twenty thousand. The other one is half zoned CR, probably roughly half is zoned CR twenty thousand. The top half is zoned TR ten thousand. What this proposal does is request a rezon to the business commercial zone as a, as a base zone, and then the senior housing overlay on top of that. What they're proposing is two, twenty-four units on three point two-one total acres, which meets the minimum requirement in this zone. You have to have at least two acres to do a senior housing overlay zone. No more than thirty-two units and no more than eight units per acre. This, this meets that. Obviously, they're, they're under that requirement. One thing that we looked at is the planning commission was brought up was additional parking. Senior housing overlay, if you have, you know, visitors or things like that, we need to make sure there's enough parking there. The plan that's shown has fifteen additional parking spots and then the, obviously, the two parking spots we require per, per dwelling. The planning commission, city council, and our, in, in reviewing these, there's the eight standards that they, they, says that needs to be considered as, as you review this. We can go over these more, but for the sake of this presentation, we'll, we'll jump over those. But these are what, what should be considered. The property to the west is an existing senior housing development. And then strounding properties are to the north. There's some TR ten thousand. And everything else around them is, is half acre to one acre zoning or, or lot size of right now. So, is, if this is approved for a rezone, they'll, they'll come back for the subdivision process that we have laid out. Mayor Merrill brought this up. The state has required cities follow up the same process for every, every subdivision essentially that this, and this would fall under that. So, if this were to rezone, they'd have a preliminary here, preliminary review by the planning commission and then final would be reviewed by staff. So, with this, you're looking more at the idea. They've given us a concept that shows kind of the general layout with those as well. The planning commission held a public hearing on this. Again, some of the things that were brought up, traffic congestion, emergency access parking, and maintaining the neighborhoods. Residential appearance was, was part of those. As we go through the subdivision review process, a lot of those things will be, will be addressed and, and brought up. The, the fire chief and engineering and everything takes a look at those as well to make sure they meet all those administrative requirements that are part of this. They discussed adding fences, trees, signage on there to preserve the privacy in the residential feel. The planning commission felt that it was compatible with the neighboring senior housing, while acknowledging the concerns about traffic and parking. There was also addressed by the applicant with the additional parking spaces and the general lower impact on traffic created by senior housing in general. They, the planning commission motioned to recommend approval of this with the following conditions. Has to remain age restricted to fifty-five and older. In the senior housing overlay zone, that's a requirement. You get one person that can live there that's under fifty-five. So, if your spouse is under fifty-five, they can, they can still live there with you. You don't have to kick him out. For that, for that reason, anyway. Include privacy fencing on there to the neighbors to the west was something that was brought up. And then provide neighborhood access pathways and visitor parking, and then just maintain that minimal signage that we discussed. And then establishing the HOA standards. My understanding was there was a discussion to the development, to the, to the west, the existing one, that they would, they would have similar HOA and be kind of brought in to those HOA requirements as well. I think that's all I have. Again, this was noticed as a public hearing of the planning commission. They took care of that. And again, this is a legislative decision. As staff reviewed this, it looked like it met all their administrative requirements for something in this zone. But again, a legislative decision, so if, if it meets the general vision and guidelines of the community, it's kind of what you're looking at that way. That's all I have. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Did you bring up the map one more?
Yeah.
And just, just so you know, if you didn't get a chance to listen to the planning commission meeting, the HOA, the, the current existing fifty-five and older community, HOA voted to support the development and to add them to the association. So, it would be one HOA, one homeowners association. And there were a lot of compliments by residents about the owner reaching out to the neighbors, working with the HOA to try and, try and meet the needs of everyone as much as possible. It seemed fairly positive.
So, Kelly, this is just a couple of the maps. This is the current zoning right now. There's a creek that runs through this. That's kind of the natural divider there. So, they're only requesting that those bottom half that's, that's currently yellow be rezoned to this senior housing overlay. Let me pull up the, and then this is the, kind of the concept that they've submitted as part of this.
And what's the acreage of that bottom half?
It's three point two-one acres. Yeah, that's everything. Yep, yep.
So, the permitted number of units is, sorry, go ahead. So, that's everything is three point two acre?
No, just the, just the part that they're looking to rezon.
So, they're proposing twenty-four units, but under the ordinance, they could have more than that.
Yeah, you could have up to eight, thirty-two is the max, or eight per, per, yep.
Then the cul-de-sac above it, that's an addition as well.
Yeah, that would, yeah, that's not currently existing. The, the top three would be a separate subdivision. It would have to go through, those would be single-family homes that would have to go through that process.
They're not asking for any rezoning there that's outside of this process, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the discussion in the planning commission was to keep or retain or have a pathway through those three lots so, so the residents could access Creekside Park. Is there already a path there? Is there something crossed? So, they would have to build a bridge over the creek if we impose that condition?
Yeah, it's something we've talked about. There's, there's been on the Trail Master Plan for a long time, a trail from kind of along Dry Creek from Main Street to Creekside Park. This wouldn't exactly follow that route, but it would be a route. You know, back in the day, I'm not sure why a road wasn't put through this area to kind of continue that block. For a lot of reasons, it would have helped traffic, but it's, it's not there. But two benefits I could see to this project. One would be some kind of a trail through there that would allow these residents as well as others to access Creekside Park through that way. The other is the pipeline that we're just starting on Canyon Crest Road. The idea is to get water from basically the Healy Well up to the North State Center. Part of that alignment comes down Red Pine Drive, goes to Main Street, up to the bank, and then goes east and then turns back north. If that pipeline were to be to put in this road, it would cut a significant amount of improvements in existing asphalt out and would save a ton of money for us. So, it's something we've talked about, just, you know, briefly, two potential benefits to the city and the public with this project.
So, if you are going to make a motion, the suggestion is that you include the, that they work with the city for alignment of a trail to go the Main Street to Creekside and then also to, to move the pipeline for, it's PI, right? To move the PI pipeline to go through this area.
I, I also want to point out that there's another park. You could see it, I was just looking at it. If you bring it, the, there's also access to Peterson Park. So, it almost is a connector between two major parks in this area. And I know it would be somewhat intrusive to have that bridge and all that, but it'd be of great benefit to our city. So, not only providing access to Creekside, but if they want to come the other way and use a different park. There's, isn't, isn't that the access right there? Am I, am I wrong?
No.
It, it's actually further.
Yeah.
East, yeah.
But it's still like on that road, close proximity, not direct. Okay.
So, can I get Will Jones from the Trails Committee to address the trail?
Thank you. Just quickly, Will Jones, oh, court, man, I haven't talked long enough. One of the things we want to stand in being in favor of this trail, we have, Shane and I met early this year talking about the downtown, downtown trails. And we decided we needed to go south because there wasn't a way to get past this blockage going north or east. So, we want, because we wanted to get to our main park there, but we didn't have a way out yet, so we, we're gonna go the other way. With this happening, this is a home run. We need your help. We need to get this part in. Then we can go back, and we've got a little issue right at Main Street. I need your help there. The trail that's supposed to be there doesn't exist. But if we get those, then we've only got two more owners to get through. And we can get this trail all the way from Main Street up to the first south and real close to our park. So, yeah, we are for this.
Have you seen any examples of where, like, some of those problem areas, where you actually kind of run it more into the Dry Creek red and, and improve it in that way? Because that's obviously continual access, right?
Yes, and, and that's, that's exactly how it's gonna have to be built. You're exactly right. Thank you. Thank you.
Can you clarify on the pressure irrigation? Is that a special, are we putting it in the motion because it's special access other than regular street access? Or help me understand that.
On our master plan right now, it shows a different alignment, but this is an alignment that could be beneficial to the city for sure.
And, and moving pressure irrigation routes does not require a change to the master plan? Would that require us voting on it later?
We, we actually talked about it the other day in a meeting we had and...
No, no, no further vote from our side?
That'd be fantastic.
Okay. Just want to make sure what our motion needs to include.
Just a question. So, the HOA is gonna be involved in both of these, right? Do the HOA play a part at all in, in who can buy them? I'm kind of curious only from the fact, fact that based on our ordinance, I think four of these could be sold to young families. I don't know, wait, does the HOA have the ability to limit that if they don't want that in their community, or how does that work?
So, our, our ordinance requires that you have to be fifty-five plus to, to live in one of these?
Only eighty, only eighty percent of them.
No, eighty percent.
So, twenty percent of them don't have to be.
Never heard that, yeah. Yeah, I, I know in there that it says you can have, like, so if you're, like I said, if your spouse or if they had a kid that wasn't in there, but we can look that up too.
I think the HOA has that same language. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'm curious how that works, 'cause, 'cause this, this is part of, I go to church with these people. This, this, this current facility, and there, there have, there have been some younger families in there, 'cause I think there is an ability in our ordinance to allow a certain percentage to not be fifty-five and older. Yeah, it says, or housing that is at least one person who is fifty-five or older in at least eighty percent of the occupied units. So, so grandkids can be there. Four to five. I think there were one where it was the grandparents and they had, they had a couple of kids, married spouses, and some grandkids living there as well. But in this case...
Well, no, somebody can like actually purchase or rent if they're not fifty-five. It could be a young married couple. I know like other cities have that same thing.
Do you know if the HOA is gonna be a guardian on that or, or they can't based on our ordinance?
Well, so this is, are these for rent or are they gonna be for sale? For sale?
The owner did say that he was gonna keep some and rent some, including one potentially for himself.
Yeah, I remember saying one for himself, yes.
He anticipates maybe living there in eight to ten years, so he, he does plan to rent some, but I think the most, most will be sold.
Steve, this is playing devil's advocate, so I'm sorry to bring it up, but I was once told that it's not really legally enforceable 'cause it's discrimination, age discrimination, which is a protected class. Can you just speak to that?
Typically, age discrimination goes the other direction, where people who are over a certain age are, are discriminated against. And what you're saying is people under age fifty-five are being discriminated against potentially. Is that what you mean?
I just thought age discrimination in general was a protected class?
It is in terms of employment.
Okay.
So, I don't know the answer to that.
Not necessarily applies here?
Other than to say that there are a number of municipalities that have the same kind of ordinance. And I'm not aware of any challenges locally to that. I think the idea of having a certain percentage or certain exceptions so that it's not strictly fifty-five and over.
Would be that.
Yeah, I mean, they exist everywhere. They're all over Arizona. If it was unconstitutional, it would be, it would be...
I think what you're saying is the twenty percent allows for...
Gives some flex.
Yeah, so it's not a hard and fast. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I'm kind of curious. It's more of a curiosity question. I heard Troy Page talk about, you know, this, they're committed to this, you know, and they're not gonna switch it up, but I'm curious, how, do you already have a, a builder for these, a developer and builder? Are you gonna start soon? Is this something you're gonna? But I'm curious, how, do you already have a, a builder for these, a developer and builder? Are you going to start soon? Is this something you're going to?
Yeah, if you're going to talk, you have.
If you could just state your name and address before you start talking, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
Uh, Troy Page, uh, five twenty-seven South High Bench Road. Uh, so when, when my dad passed away just over a year ago, the, the responsibility of figuring out what to do with this property fell to the kids. And there's six of us. Uh, and so the, the first thought was who's going to move in there and, and take over. But all of us are too old to, to buy a five thousand square foot home and take care of five acres. So we decided that wasn't an option. So we, we, as a family, decided to quietly put this property out on the market and just see what happened. And it was amazing, uh, the, 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 the proposals that came through. And we, we discussed the proposals as a family and multiple proposals came through for, just to kind of do phase two of the existing fifty-five and over development that's there because it, because it's been a great success. And Shane and Ryan can tell you, uh, that multiple contractors have come in to them with that bounced ideas off them. Well, we took those ideas, uh, or those proposals, and we said, you know what? We think that the best thing to do, uh, with this property, the best thing for the city, uh, the best thing for its residents and the best thing for the neighbors is to do this fifty-five and over development. So we employed, uh, Ken, uh, to put some discipline in how we would present this to the city. So that we were, uh, so that we could, uh, request the zone change, but do it in a, in a disciplined manner that made sense and that we were following codes and setbacks and, and the road was the right side and the density was correct and so forth, because we didn't know that. So we asked him to help us do that, and that's what you see, uh, in our proposal. And so we have proposals from, uh, three or four different contractors that are very similar to what you see in Ken's drawings. Once we get the zoning change, if we are allowed the zoning change, uh, and, and specific to the fifty-five and over, uh, overlay. And that was one of the biggest concerns for the neighbors is that we get this zone change and it's commercial. And a year down the road, I decide, you know what? I think it's better used to put, uh, storage units or, or four-story apartment buildings or whatever. I didn't want that to be a concern for them, so we wanted to make sure that it was tied to the fifty-five and over or the retirement overlay. So that's in there. Uh, but now what we'll do, we, the, the trust still owns that property. If we, if we are allowed the zoning change with the fifty-five and over overlay, we will then go back to the proposals and, and, and go to the contractors and decide which contractor we think will do the best job of what we have in mind for that property. And that's what you see on the board. So, uh, we have not selected a contractor. Uh, we will select a contractor if we are awarded the, the zone change. And we'll, we'll select from the, the, the four that have given us really good quality proposals.
How fast do you think you might bring out the bulldozers? I mean, how fast might it start?
I, I, I don't see it happening until probably spring at the, at the soonest. Yeah, that, that's fast, but, but, uh, uh, yeah, it, it wouldn't happen any faster than that for sure.
On the plat, you, between lots twenty-one and twenty, what, what's that? Just going to be some nice open space?
Yeah, so, uh, what we talked about with Ken is it, is the, the acreage you would allow for thirty-two, but that's too dense. But then if you go to twelve, that doesn't give enough residents the opportunity to move in there. So we, we, we designed this to give us kind of a good balance of leaving some open space, some extra parking. And, and you know, parking was, was a concern with the planning commission. And one of the members of the current HOA got up and said, look, we have twelve spots in our current HOA of, of extra parking. And I've, I've li- I mean, we've lived there since those were built. I, I drive by it every day. And they made the comment that rarely are more than one of the parking spots, one of the twelve being used. And I can only think of one time in fifteen years that, that they've been full. So, you know, I think that we have enough, uh, extra parking because that was a concern. We didn't want to clutter, uh, Red Pine Drive up any more than it already is. And we think that with the, with the traffic that, that the seniors actually contribute to is less than you would see with a, with a residential development here. So, uh, this, this plan right here isn't set in stone. It, it, you know, it could be twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-six units. But, but we felt this was a pretty good balance of open space, but also giving us the right number of, of homes, of homes for the development. So, and I think this, this plan actually shows twenty-six, but, but it could be anywhere from twenty-four to twenty-six in my mind.
Remind me the total square footage. It was three, what was it, Ryan? Three point what?
The acres?
Three point two one acres.
Three point two one. So then the maximum units they can really have is eight per acre, which is twenty-four.
With a hard, with a hard max of thirty-two.
Right. So they can't have thirty-four. I mean, that's if you have enough acreage. So with a three point two, the most you could have is maybe twenty-five, but twenty-four, I'd say we limit it to twenty-four.
That sounds very reasonable.
If I remember from listening to the planning commission, like, we're, we're doing the zone change, the senior overlay, and then there'll be a subdivision approval process that will work out parking and all of the deep, the nitty gritty? Is, is that my understanding? I was just observing the, is that, okay, Ryan's nodding yes.
And there were some concerns with-
Deanne, you can record that. Ryan, that's a yes.
Ryan nodded yes.
Yes.
There were concerns with moving trees and doing some things and, and, you know, that's, that's stuff that we can nail down as we get through the process, to make sure that we leave some mature trees and, and, and good landscape as well.
That can all be worked out. It's, the, the code requires a development agreement with that, so the stuff like that can all be, but as far as like road width, number of units, different things like that. Looks like they could have with three point two one, they could have twenty-five point six eight. I don't know how you do point six eight of a home, so we'd probably just say twenty-five.
So we'll certainly round down.
So you're saying we'll see this again? We'll see this again?
No, you will not.
No, once it's, once the rezone.
Development agreement.
So this is what the, yeah, the development agreement might, uh, we would have to look at to see if that would come before you guys again. But as far as the subdivision itself, yeah, this would.
But my recommendation is if there are some specific conditions that you want to require, it would be good to mention them in the motion so that we can incorporate those in the development agreement.
So, so Ryan, is this, does, do these homes, as if he built this thing exactly the way it looks here, does this qualify as affordable housing at all?
Uh, it probably would be. Probably an increase in density is what it would fall under. Um, yeah, it probably would.
So it could, it could.
That could help with that.
Alpine is putting in some affordable housing even though, yeah, okay. And is, is that the same, is it the same, remind me on the Montella stuff, is it the same, are we putting them in the same zone as Montella?
Yeah, it would be the same, yep.
Because my only fear is, is it turning into that, which is not of technically affordable housing anymore, right? And there's, there's two-story units and all that kind of thing. So just as far as affecting the neighborhood and everything, I don't know. How do we, is there a way, Steve, to?
I think as part of the motion, you can put limitations on it, can you not, since it's part of a zone change request?
Single story with basement, but no, no.
Yeah, so I just wanted to ask the property owner, like, is there, can we say like, so he said he doesn't want storage units, so can we say no storage units? Single story, you know, stuff like that.
I don't think you need to say no storage units because the ordinance doesn't allow that.
Okay, good.
That, that was just an example extreme.
And that's, that's the protection with the senior housing overlay. The only thing that would be allowed is anything that's allowed in the senior, which is just senior housing units.
Okay.
Yep, yep. And I did, Jason, to your point too, we did find that section with the eighty percent. There's a different section that, that talks about the limitation that I was thinking of, but yeah, that, Jason's right, that is, that eighty percent is, is in there. Yep.
But if, for example, you know, there's an important, if it's important to have community access through a trail or whatever, I think that's something that the motion ought to specify, because otherwise you get private property here and then they may not want a trail through their property.
Do we need to put in there, like the planning commission asked, that we restrict it to fifty-five and older? Or do we not need to do that because we're bringing in as the business, commercial, house, senior housing overlay only?
I don't think you need that fifty-five and over. It's in the ordinance.
Jason, are you ready with the motion?
And also establishing HOA standards. I mean, just that general request or condition of the planning commission, it's in the ordinance as well. It requires, yeah, it requires an HOA.
Would it ever make sense for us, since they've already communicated, they want to be in the HOA with a neighboring property to the west, to include that in there or not?
Maybe make it a condition?
If that's important to you, you can make it a condition. Otherwise, they could work that out later.
Maybe it could be their own HOA, but I think it's up to the owners to decide if they want to join and be subject to the same CCNRs.
Well, in our opinion, if, if you look at the current HOA and how they manage that property, I don't think it would be a wrong decision to, to, uh, be part of that HOA. They do a fantastic job.
And those are all private roads, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And they did work with the police, I mean, the fire department and police on getting access as a secondary access point through the current HOA.
Well, and this is a question for Steve because our ordinances allow that eighty-twenty on the fifty-five and over for age. Would the HOA, if they were adopted into that existing supersede that, or would that stand, the eighty-twenty?
Well, as long as you're not violating a federal housing standard on discrimination or whatever, you can agree by contract to be more restrictive, I think, than our ordinance. The question is, frankly, if you want to be included in the same HOA, that's going to require an amendment of their CCNRs to include more property. All of the, you know, a certain number of, of the property owners are going to have to agree to that. So I would just frankly let the property owners work that out rather than require that.
So I'll make a motion, but I have one last question on, uh, with regards to, um, providing neighborhood access pathways. Should we put in there that they work with, um, the city or they work with, uh, Trails Committee on that? Or do we just put it in general terms that we, you know, need to provide neighborhood access pathways?
Yeah.
Work with the city with approval from the Trails Committee or recommendation with, from the Trails Committee?
It would be a recommendation from the Trails Committee.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we approve the proposed rezone of two four two two and two four, sorry, two four two and two four three east Red Pine Drive to the business commercial and senior housing overlay zone as proposed with the following conditions, that, um, the landowner work with the city and the Alpine Trails Committee to provide neighbor access and pathways, um, work to have some visi- um, visitor parking. And that's it.
Oh, PI.
PI irrigation route. And work with the city to make sure the PI has the route through the property as needed.
We're going to require them to lay the PI lines or?
We, no. It would, I mean, maybe it would be their contractor, but it's a bigger line and it would be ex- an expense to the city.
Okay.
So.
So just, you're asking for an easement then? Is that what it is?
Yes.
So, an easement.
Yep. Can we specify the trail location and what it, what it?
No.
I think if they work with the-
I, I was going the same dr- I would recommend a connection between Red Pine Drive and First South.
Yeah.
I mean, part of it, it's the same property owner, part of it's outside the zone change, but.
It's, yeah, they have control over the property. Jason, do you want to amend your motion?
Work with the, the city and the Trails Committee, um, to provide neighbor access specifically, um, to Red Pine Drive and, um-
To First South.
Deanne, did you get that?
I hope so.
So it's basically a trail connection between Red Pine South and First South. Did I say Red Pine South? From Red Pine to First South.
Yeah.
That's what the trail map shows, but getting it there is-
Going to be hard.
Extremely challenging.
And that's what Will was talking about with regards to, we've got certain places along, I mean, we need this no matter what for that, if we were to go that route, but, um.
What if the language included at a minimum?
Wait, hold on just a second. We have, and we have a motion. Did we get a second for that or are we still on the motion? Okay, go ahead. Um, why don't you finish your motion? Let's get a second and then we can discuss or re-amend your motion.
So I made a motion and I included those three things.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Thielen, seconded by Councilwoman Hanneman.
Before we discuss, can we have Deanne read the conditions, please, that we've?
Oh, I'd love to.
Thank you.
Okay. So what I think I got from that is that, um, Councilman Thielen said he moved to approve the proposed rezone, um, et cetera, with the following conditions, that the landowner will work with the city and the Trails Committee to provide neighborhood access and pathways to connect Red Pine Drive and First South, visitor parking, and work with the city to provide an easement for the PI line. Did that sound like what we were trying to get to?
Thank you. That's, I, I didn't remember the parking. I knew there were three things. Thanks.
Shane, second.
Okay. I, I guess I just have a question. Whoops, turned myself off. The necess- necessity of the visitor parking, is that not by ordinance?
Yes, we have a minimum requirement that they have to, they have to propose as part of that. That'll be reviewed.
Are we asking for something different than what's in our ordinances?
It would just be what's in the ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, before we go to a vote, was there something?
Uh, resident just wants to make a comment on this, um.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, I have several things. Weren't we going to go to discussion first, second, open for discussion?
Right, but then there was something that was going on. I was just trying to-
Okay.
Yeah, they just, they just wanted to make a comment. I said that's, where this isn't a public hearing, it's up to you.
So this isn't a public hearing? The places for public hearing was, we had it last Tuesday in the Planning Commission meeting, I'm sorry. Council was welcome to listen in on, um, the Planning Commission meeting and talk to the planning commissioners between then and now. And then, you know, looking forward. Okay, let's go ahead and, um, let's go down the line. Did you have any comment or questions, Brett?
No questions. Um, I'll just say I think this is a good use of that property. My own experience, two years ago, my in-laws were looking for a place to live and they needed quite a bit of assistance from us. And we were very fortunate that one came open at the current location, otherwise we would be driving back and forth a long way away. So I think this is a good addition for Alpine to have this option for, for various reasons. And thanks for all your hard work in planning this well.
So a couple of things. On the trails, if you look at the Trail Master Plan, it actually designates it going from one hundred south and then following, I, it, this isn't a topography, but I'm assuming it's following the creek bed. So we need to also include, um, a connection to the property to the west so that we can have, um, a connection point to Main Street. That would be one point. And then another point is that-
Wait, can you clarify, or is that not what Jason said or is that different with?
He said to Red Pine Drive, which goes south.
Okay, and you're saying it needs to go which?
Also goes west. I mean, if you want to say at a minimum, this and this, but, or-
West to what point, juncture?
To the property owner to the west as we work through, I mean, these trails and getting this trail alignment sometimes takes several years and lots of planning. But if we don't have the connection points from, um, lot to lot, then-
It's a cutoff.
Yeah, we don't even have that available to us. So we need to make sure we're at least within the general directions following the Trail Master Plan so that we don't lose that opportunity. Like Will said, hey, we thought this was a no-go and now it's back. So now that it's back, let's make sure we don't put it into the-
So are you saying they need access to the west, meaning the current senior? So are you saying they need access to the west, meaning the current senior area? Is that the property we're, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And then the other point, and I don't know Councilmember Thielen, but there were a lot of conversations from surrounding property owners and it kind of got pretty specific into certain trees and will we keep this? And the applicant said, yeah, we will work with you all. And that's important to us too. It's important to us to do those things. But I know once these projects get moving and they start looking at property lines and, oh, that tree's sitting right there. And unless there's really specific callouts and a meeting of the minds, those trees die. Whether they die because they cut the roots out and they weren't sensitive to that, or they just ended up taking them down. So I think to our attorney's guidance, if there are things that are important, we need to make sure that that's addressed now. Or the intent, which was discussed in planning commission, and I think I understood it really clearly at that time, of the desire to work with the neighbors, will potentially, even though I know you're, you know, you have good intention, gets, it's a tree, it's money, it's a bulldozer, it's cheaper. So we've got to make sure that we're aligning with the intent also of, I think, what property owner and neighbors have discussed. But we need to make sure we include that as we move forward to protect them.
So are you saying you want to amend the motion in some way?
I need some language from, from our attorney that allows for not too much, but just enough to look at and save some trees or those things.
Yeah, and I think to that point too, we can address a lot of that in the development agreement, which, and I just clarified with Steve, that the development agreement would come to you guys for, for approval with that, that we can kind of hammer out some of those more specific things as, as part of that.
Because it was that we didn't know if it would come back or it may not come back.
The subdivision itself, you won't see again, but the development agreement side of it, would, would need to be approved by you guys.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. So on the, the trail thing is hard because we don't, you know, we can spend a lot of time talking trail. But to your point, right now, the trail that shows in the master plan just goes along the creek. So if we decide just to do that, we're not really connecting all the way to the other side, even though they have, you know, both parcels, so we could. But we could just say, just follow the creek and then we're going to put it back on the, on the city and trails committee to try to get it all the way along. I mean, that's, but even then, even if it's, even if it's just along the creek, well, they should be able to hook into it. So I guess that's my question. Do we really want to tell the developer to connect all the way over to First? Or do we want to just say, give him a trail access along the creek so that when we eventually connect it, it'll work? I think those are the two options. I think it's a lot to ask. We want it along the creek, but we also want you to go through your subdivision to put it there, even though it's never been put on the Trailmaster Plan before.
Let me look at that. But in this situation.
Do you pull up the, I'm looking at Jason's and not everyone can see it. Can you pull up the master parks? I don't know what to call it. The master plan, uh, trail, sorry. What is it called that you're, you were looking at, Jason?
So your motion included it going to First South. So are you saying, no, you are looking at that differently?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, to me, it almost feels like one or the other. I could be wrong.
But in this situation where it looks like the grade and the topography and the way that they've designed this neighborhood, we actually could have a portion of that trail that meanders along their south property boundary of the fifty-five and over or on the north of that neighborhood, just like we do in several areas throughout Alpine. We have trail that, that abuts side yards or backyards.
Couldn't they, couldn't Jason in his motion just say that they'll work with the trail committee and staff to ensure that there's a full trail through there and it's part of the development plan that we then approve later?
Isn't that what he already said?
Kind of. I mean, that's what I'm saying. He kind of said that. So like, I don't.
Well, he said First South and Red Pine, so he was more prescriptive.
Do we have an easement for that trail along the senior committee or the senior neighborhood at all yet?
And it's, it's major challenges going that way. Unless you're walking in the Dry Creek.
It's impassable. The, the banks are impassable right there.
I like the original motion.
Um, I do think if, I mean, we were instructed that we were not going to see it again, but if we are going to see it again and it's in the development plan, there needs to be a lot more research and like, you know, input than what I can see on this map because this is not the detail. So I, I would suggest we almost remove it from our motion and with, with some direction that it's included in the, well, I guess we don't remove it. But it's included in the development plan that these objectives are met. But how we get there, they can work that out.
Can I ask Carla, that's Mayor Merrill, if, if I could just ask the trail committee again what they would suggest on this, knowing that these two options, could you?
Will, can you come back up, please?
Yeah, Jason, what we're doing is we've been going off that master plan, which is Main Street along the gym and then through there. But you've all said it. That's a difficult path. So what we're trying to do is get as far along that as we can. So when we get up to this point, we can go any way we can to get to First South. So this would, for us, this is a biggie to get to First South because who knows if we can get further out? We haven't had that. So that's why Shane sent me to go, go west because here's a way now. We can get to First South. That's big to us. And whether we go, have to, if we're, if we get the easement all the way to the Main Street that way, along the creek, awesome. You will all love that trail if we get it in. But most likely, we may end up out there on Red Pine.
But Will.
We will cross in and then it'll be right to us.
If you, if we want to get to First South, the, the actual land that's we're talking about today doesn't even touch First South. We're not even talking about the north.
It's the same property owner.
Same owner.
I know, but can we, can we, can we tie up other property that we're not even making a motion on?
We're just saying this is where.
We can negotiate.
Yeah, this is where, and, and they, they've talked about it. They, they said they were, it was something they were, were looking at. We're not, we're not proposing something that they have any other reason.
Okay.
They brought up the planning commission.
It's not like we're asking for thirty-foot swath, right?
We just, we just want our trail.
So the option is to take the trail along the riverbed and then continue up till it hits some First South? Or we have the option to go across the creek and then go between the two lots and the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
And is there a preference over one or the other?
Well, I, I want the one that I know I can get right now. That's, that's why we've held off is because we didn't have a way.
Which is the one they know you can get right now?
Yeah, yeah. So in other words, between those trails and go that way, go to First South.
Going north or following the river along until it hits?
I would prefer to go north now because I can get that.
Are you talking about going from Red Pine to First South?
Yes, that's what I'm talking.
So not following, not following the river up here and hitting on Red, out?
That would be ideal, but I don't know that we'll ever get it. That's what I'm saying, Jason. I'm just thinking what we can get, let's get it in. And if for some way down the road, ten years, that access comes, that'd be awesome too. Wouldn't hurt to have to. But right now, we can get out.
So just a question, as far as unintended consequences, if people want to then go from First South over to Red Pine, they would go down the cul-de-sac, go between these two lots in a small trail, cross the stream, and then they would somehow kick onto that road because there's not a sidewalk there and they'd walk the road down to Red Pine Drive?
And, and that's a private road.
There, there could be, there could be a sidewalk incorporated as part of the, the new development.
Because it is, it is a private road.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to understand.
I know, I'm trying to understand it too.
Well, you'd have an easement, just like you have through any other private property.
Just like the Fitzgerald annexation, have that sidewalk right through the development.
Yeah, we put a sidewalk.
But those are public streets.
Yeah.
That's what we're thinking. We just, we just got to get that.
That's not a private road and that sidewalk through the development, right?
What's that?
In the Fitzgerald, that's not a private road.
No, it's not private.
This is a private road.
We just put our, our trail next to the road.
I'll, I'll give you an example. The upper water tank in Three Falls, that access road goes through private property that the city has a public easement on to pass through there. It's the same type of situation.
It says a big no trespassing right there.
Yep. He knows, he knows who made me put it there.
So I'm still a little, I mean, as a, as a council, I like the thoughts of, of some of those unintended consequences with.
Yeah, I just picture that we're, right now, we're working on this south piece of the property. We have not even like, I, I don't know what jurisdiction we have to encumber. The north piece, other than it's the same owner. And of course, I have no intent on selling it and doing something else with it, but there's always surprises. So, I mean, if we're, if we're allowed to say, we're, we're making a move on this yellow piece, but let's tie up the blue please too with our, with our, our objectives. If we're allowed to do that, that seems like an overreach, but if we can, I'll believe you.
Because based on what Will was saying, where we cross over to the cul-de-sac, it seems like in the motion, we also need to put a, an easement that goes all the way to Red Pine Drive if we're going to go that route. Am I wrong there? Otherwise, you, without that in the motion, you don't have an easement.
Do you have to have an easement that goes all the way to Red Pine Drive because the street is the public right-of-way? You only need an easement between the, or actually an easement along that north part of the the proposed development.
Even though it's a private road, that's still an easement that people?
I don't think, is that a private road coming in, Ken?
No.
Not on the over fifty-five side. It's a public road.
One hundred south side would be, it would have to be public.
Yeah.
But, but saying, taking it to First South, um, let's, let's say they pull back on the idea of the cul-de-sac and just have a, a larger lot there. That would protect that situation that there could still be an easement along the property line or something.
Well, and to be clear, what's proposed south of the creek is a private road.
Right.
And so we need to have that as part of your motion if you want that.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is that's the easement, correct?
Yes.
So it's not an easement all the way along the street from Red Pine, Red Pine? It's only, it looks like an easement forty to fifty feet. I don't know. I can't tell by this, but where the road terminates?
No, we're asking for an easement all the way through.
Because it's a private street.
I see, okay.
Part of it will pave, part of it will be across the creek and part of it will be through the northern part of the property.
Will, you don't ask for much. Never. Okay. I think it's worth it. I just don't know, like, you know, if this.
Do we have to amend the motion to include that an easement be granted specifically?
If that's the route we're going to go, I mean, Jessica kind of.
Jessica kind of brought up just going along the creek because that's, connects it all in. There's one option there. The other option is to do, just the other one, the other one's to do both.
Well, we can't go across the creek because it implicates different property owners to get to one hundred south.
Right. But I thought we just said that we need to do that.
No, no, I'm sorry, along the creek, doesn't that go through?
Oh, along the creek all the way up, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We would have to get the agreement from other property owners to do that. That's why Will is saying, that's great if we can get to that, but that's, that's.
Okay, I'm finally putting all these pieces together.
So it has to be an easement all the way through.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, the private road.
Both sides are private.
Across the creek.
No, the north wouldn't be. The north side of Dry Creek would be a public street.
How about we put the water line above ground and have, put the path on top of the water?
That's called the Murdoch Trail. Okay, when we're done with trails, I have one more topic.
Motion a second. Do you have another question regarding this?
I do, I do have another question. I was just looking at the eight, the eight criteria and checking them off. You guys, you guys know I like to make lists. So the, the thing that we, we haven't talked about in this meeting, but was brought up in the public hearing was number two, whether the overlay may be injurious to potential or existing development within the vicinity. And six, the economic impact of the proposed facility on our use on the surrounding area. So has that been addressed due to our satisfaction that when we go from residential to zoning B.C. to denser housing, it was originally a twenty thousand square foot lots, what is the economic impact?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if there's a, and maybe there is. I don't, I don't know if we really looked at the, well, we did look at that. That was discussed in the planning commission, but it wasn't a, it wasn't a negative economic impact on, on the area. I don't.
Yeah, it was discussed. They, they asked Troy Slade, who's a real estate agent. And he basically said, yeah, having, instead of single-family homes there, three or four single-family homes, that it could have a negative impact. But then the converse with that was the fifty-five and older communities are good neighbors. They go to bed early. They, they create little traffic. So it was kind of a, that could also be a positive. So it was kind of a, just a discussion that could, that it could be, could be an economic impact, but it could also be beneficial.
So the economic impact may be neutral?
Maybe. I mean, I.
These are good neighbors.
I can imagine the owners to the east might consider it more of a negative because rather than backing to three acre lots with three homes.
If, if I remember, there was some, there was some considerably unusual items stored there for quite some time.
And, and.
And, and it's been Troy's nemesis to just try and figure out what to do with that stuff. But, so this is an improvement from what was there, no matter what we do. Okay. I'm seeing lots of nods, even a family member. So I tried not to say that offensively. Okay.
And Chrissy, I think the, the point was brought up too where there's already an existing senior housing that's, that's in the vicinity. It wasn't a, it wasn't a major impact that way because there was already, that's what was already existing as well.
Okay. And that was like in the, in the eight criteria, because it's adjacent, it's in harmony and all these other things, which I didn't list. But because it's adjacent to the current, it's very, it's a very good location. Okay. Thank.
That's it?
Okay. Kelly? Jason?
Well, I don't know if my, my trail thing is clear.
I think, do we need to amend the motion to, to require an easement?
Well, I don't know if I, if I agree with that too. I mean, my, my thing is, is this is different than for the Fitzgerald property. It's an annexation. We can ask whatever we want from them. I know this is a change of order, zoning, but it feels a little different. That was a public street that we put the trail along. This is a private street. It's a narrow street, not like a larger street up there. To me, it feels like, I'm just having some internal stuff saying that we don't have a trail right now in our master plan going through this property. It's not supposed to be a through road. Are we better off just saying that they're going to deed the, a trail along the creek so that if and when we create a connection from Main Street to one hundred south, that it could be used, but not force them to create a thoroughfare that goes through this private neighborhood with bikes and stuff? That it's an elderly community that, that.
Yeah, can I offer an opinion on it? Your, I think your motion was, and I got, when I said I got some clarification for it, I think it was perfect because a development plan will follow this. And that's where you're going to get the specifics of what's going on with the trail.
And the other thing is, is from my understanding from listening to the planning commission, that, that the owner worked with the HOA and this was, they, they've agreed to put that trail in. That's, that's their intent to do so. Is that, is that incorrect or is that correct?
Well, I don't think the existing HOA, oh, sorry.
I don't think the existing HOA, if, if you bring that old map up, where the, the trail goes from First South or from Main Street to First South along the south bank of that creek, that is right on their property. And I don't think they've agreed to put that, that trail through their portion of, of, of their property yet. So I don't know that and they did not agree to that. But they, they, the, the reason we, we talked about using the road as the trail is because we originally thought about using that east property line. But the homeowners on the east didn't like that idea, which I completely understand. So we moved it to use the private road as, as, as the trail access.
So are you basically saying that you agree to allow this, this trail to access one hundred south through your property?
From Red Pine, I was just talking to Ken and, and if it, if it goes up that private road and we figure out how to get across the creek, we could either go through the cul-de-sac or along that east property line, right along the Grubers, George Gruber there. We could, we could go right up that east property line if we had to or to the cul-de-sac road and up from there, either way.
It sounds like there's a desire with the trail committee, with the community to have that access trail. And for me, alleviates some of your concerns. If the homeowner, or if you're the owner, you agree to do that, then asking for that easement is a lot easier for me to, to request.
Yes, and, and, and if, if it makes Will happy, we're all happy. Right? So our commitment is we, we would do, we would do whatever is, is best, as long as it's not too invasive. You know, it doesn't become a huge problem and we put a, a twelve-foot wide sidewalk to justify it. It doesn't make sense, but we'll, we'll do what, what's reasonable for sure.
It would be nice, especially for those community, those residents of those two fifty-five and older communities to be able to get to Creekside Park without the roundabout.
So we have a bridge across, a walk bridge now and, and my dad gave them the okay. and, and my dad gave them the okay to use it, and I can tell you, most of those residents use it on a daily basis.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So, that's, it sounds like you're willing to do that, so that's why I think it's, it's palpable to...
That, that, that's great to know, because to that point, then Kelly's right, it is the right motion. I was just thinking if it was mine, but it's not mine, so that's great.
Okay, so, you've got a motion and a second, any other questions? Sorry, we've got a motion by Councilwoman Thielen, seconded by Councilwoman Hanneman. There's no further discussion, I'll proceed with the roll call vote.
Kelly, well, yes.
Chris Hanneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Ryan Remler, yes.
Jessica Smioun, yes.
Okay. Item F, cell tower.
So, there's been a proposal submitted by this Crown Castle Inc., uh, to add or replace antennas, ancillary equipment and ground equipment is shown in the submitted plans to an existing pole, uh, that's on six ninety-four Rocky Mountain Drive. It's located on private property. We've reviewed the proposal, and, and the code, it says if it's a substantial change, uh, it requires a public hearing to be done by the planning commission, and then approval to be, to be, or reviewed by the city council. The submitted plans show they're going to do an underground conduit connecting the, there's the, uh, leased facilities that, that have, uh, the equipment located on it. It's underground to the, to the existing pole, uh, running a new feed line cable up to the existing pole. And then, uh, it's, instead of installing four, there's only three wireless antennas at the top of the existing pole. So, they want to add these antennas, they, they come out about two feet, and then a rough measurement is about seven feet, uh, in length that they would come out. Where this is an existing pole, a lot of the requirements that we have are dealing with new cell tow, or new, uh, wireless communication towers. So, these were already existing in, in, in a lot of these cases. What our code does say is that we can, uh, require it, uh, some, some camouflage in there, basically to, uh, make sure it fits in with the surrounding areas. This is heavily regulated by the FCC and FAA, FAA regulations as well, that govern a lot of the stuff that cities usually don't have specialties in. They require, the planning commission held this, uh, required public hearing. The, the main discussion was the pole being located on, uh, private property. Obviously, the residents in the neighborhood would like these poles gone and, and move somewhere else. Understandable if you're, you're a neighbor. That wasn't really what was being requested, so the, what the planning commission looked at is, is having requirements, uh, you know, different, uh, camouflage, to be proposed as part of that, those faux trees, they call them. The mayor looked at, uh, I think water tower, different ideas to do that. We discussed this with the applicants, um, we had some other, uh, questions arise as part, as part of this as well, that we've, we've tried to address there. Um, so it is an active pole, um, they're just looking to update, uh, the existing equipment, uh, on there. The different design options, they said to do the faux tree or the water tower look, uh, what they'd have to do is, is do a complete tear down and, and, uh, a, a brand-new pole would have to be, uh, submitted as part of that. They said, well, they're just updating the equipment, they'd rather not, uh, do that, and I don't, I don't know if we can require a, a whole new pole to be done as part of that. The applicant, or the private property owner, Clyde Shepherd, in conversations with him, he said he'd be willing to plant, uh, real pine trees around it. Uh, in talking with the company that does this, they said as long as they're not over thirty feet tall, it shouldn't be an issue. So, he's, he's willing to do that.
So, Ryan, I've got a question, can we not require them to do faux trees or to do a water-take cell tower?
Our code...
Since this is a significant change?
Our code talks about, uh, if it is a substantial change, what we can do is different color options that, that we can do. It doesn't really say anything beyond that as a design standard. I would, I would look to Steve on that, to see if there's anything, anything additional we can do.
Well, you talked of camouflaging, so to me, that's camouflaging.
Yeah, that, that was just one of the things that the planning commission looked at, how can we, how can we better camouflage those? So, one of the things they said is look at maybe potentially doing a, like a faux tree or something like that.
So, our code doesn't require, I thought you said that our code allows us to require camouflaging.
It requires, yeah, as far as like paint colors and different things that way.
Just on paint colors, that's it.
That's all I've seen in there, um, is that it, it says we can do the brown or the light blue or whatever we've got in there. I didn't see anything else that we could require on an existing pole. If it was a brand-new pole, I think that's a different story, but on an existing pole, uh, that's just how it breaks it down that way.
So, even though you've determined it's not just, uh, that it's a material change by expanding and adding three...
That's what, that's what, they said it was just an upgrade in the equipment, which our code, uh, discusses if it's an upgrade in the equipment, that's part of a, uh, it's not a, it can be a substantial change, but it's not a brand-new pole.
Can we really not do anything at this point, if they're coming for additional equipment? Can we not require them to do anything at all, we just have to say yes?
And while you look at that...
If you're asking me, Mayor, excuse me. I am just looking at three point two seven. And I'm not seeing...
That's a, if you keep going down, it's like an approval process, or I can't remember the name.
Hmm, yeah. Hang on just a minute.
So, while you look at that, the, the company in the letter represented that it was not a material change, and they said if the city doesn't respond within sixty days, that it's deemed approved. You came back and said it is a material change, and it has to be approved by the city council, by the legislative body. So, for me, that means that we should be able to do something to try and mitigate the, the eyesore that it is.
Yeah, that's, in the, in the code that we looked at, there's like an approval, I can't remember the name of the, the heading is, but it's like an approval process or approval, and it just discusses, uh, uh, having different, like, coloring options to be, to be included there.
Our code.
Yeah, in ours.
Our code does require that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, Ryan, this is a, they state this is a co-location pole. So, it's probable that there's multiple providers on this pole?
There are.
Yeah.
So, if you're having one, you can't, you'd have to get all the providers to redo all their stuff. You can't just get one of them to redo it.
That's what I'm, yeah, yeah.
So, this is, so this is going to, it's going to extend two feet wider than previously?
Yeah, so if you look at the pictures that are included in this, um, so this is the existing pole now.
Yeah.
So, what they're adding on there, and it's, it shows... So, this is the, this is the underground conduit that they would run from the existing facility to these poles. And this is essentially what it would, there's, there's three, three that are shown on there, this is the existing, and they would add three of these.
And what additional services would this provide to Alpine?
So, it's just better communication, they're just having different, uh, or additional, um...
Like, is this, is this a, is this a wifi, like broadband internet?
My understanding was it was more of a cell phone, cell tower.
Additional cell coverage?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding anyways, part of it. It is through Starlink, um, is who's also doing that, so there might be, might be some additional...
So, again, we cannot impose them to camouflage in any way other than paint color, is that correct? Because if that's the case, Ryan, I would like for you to work on our code.
Well, and I think a lot of that's part of the federal guidelines.
I don't think so, because there's a lot of cities that are going to that, and so I have a hard time believing that our hands are that tied.
Well, if it's a new...
I understand that we have to approve it, but we can also impose certain conditions on it.
Yeah, and if, I think if there's new towers, like if someone said, hey, I want to do a brand-new one, uh, we would have a lot more...
Or is our code allow that if it's a new tower as opposed to a material change?
That's, that's the whole section, the majority of it is if it's a new tower, where, where this is an existing tower. Yeah, a lot of it is, a lot of it is, uh, like new regulations, new requirements for different, for new towers.
That's the problem with these...
Material change.
These, um, the, the, I don't know what you'd call it in the outdoor world, the MPO, where the, where all the telecom comes into that unit, and then you have the underground conduit, and then you have this pole. Multiple providers are leasing space in those areas. And so, to say, I need this camouflage, or I want to redo it, like, who do you go to for that? You kind of have to do it...
It's this company, they're the aggregate of all the...
The, the people who are receiving the revenue.
The Castle people are?
Yeah.
The people who are receiving the revenue would be required to provide camouflaging, not necessarily each provider.
My understanding was that whenever they come back for a significant change, that's the time that we were allowed by federal law to put, um, guidelines on what they, you know, how, what we want it to look like. Is the error that we don't have enough in our code to enforce that? Because I know federally, we can do that, if they're asking for a significant material change, which they are.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why it's here, because we've, his staff only reviewed this. It, it does go into say if it's not a, yeah, it's this approval process. If, if it's, if it's not a material change, then it's just reviewed by staff. We viewed it as a, a substantial change in that. But yeah, from my, from my looking at it, when we looked at it originally, it was, it just specified the different colors that we could...
In our code, but she's talking about federal law that could allow us to do more than...
Yeah, I'm just going off our code.
So, maybe we should, maybe we could table this until we can get more information about federal law and what our options would be to require?
That's, I'm just going off what our code says, and federally, we could, I don't know what we can...
We could look at that. All our code says is that the planning commission, that the city council will act as, review the application and site plan, and act as the land use authority in approving or denying the application and site plan. So, uh, to me, that sounds like an administrative decision, and, um, those become a little more difficult to defend if we require stuff that's not reasonable, but maybe if there are reasonable conditions to be put on it.
I feel like they're reasonable, because I see them all over the country.
Yeah.
It's not unique to certain cities, like I said, I've seen them in a lot of different places. I don't think it's unreasonable, and, you know. I just don't understand why we don't have that here.
And where does the language of camouflage exist? Can't we use the language of camouflage? And, Ryan, you had mentioned the word camouflage, if we have that, dinner language...
The language that we have, council member says, um, "The city shall make an administrative decision as to the color. To the extent the personal wireless services facilities extend above the height of the vegetation immediately surrounding it, they shall be painted in a non-reflective light gray, light blue, or other hue which blends with the skyline and horizon, or a brown to blend in with the surrounding hillside." So, that's, that's what we've got.
I think, um, if I, help me remember, but in the public meeting, there was a general sentiment that they would prefer natural camouflage. There's some pine trees on the one side, but maybe not on the other, and some trees have been planted but had died. And although it's not immediate camouflage in time, like it could provide some coverage. And so, um, that was the direction I, or that I was remembering. Again, it was a very long, um, many public hearings in a row that night. Can anyone confirm or deny my memory on that?
Yeah, that was the, they, they were more okay with those, and the, the property owner did say that he'd be willing to put, put those trees in to, to better camouflage it in a natural. I think the discussion of the planning commission as far as the camouflaging in this, it was, can we ask them to see if they would be willing to do something like that, to, to do the faux tree, or to do, do something on top of that? I'd be more than happy to look at changing our code within the federal guidelines that we have, but we're just going off what we have.
I would also add, this other provision says, um, "A landscaping plan will be submitted to the planning commission, who will make a recommendation to the city council, who will approve the landscape plan, so..."
So, we don't have a landscape plan, do we?
Should we table it till we get a landscape plan?
Well, where this is an existing pole, a lot of that should have been approved when it went in.
Well, the landscape's all dead.
Okay, if the landscaping plan never comes to fruition, because we have a, a, um, severe, what is it called, pressure problem at the top of the hill? Like, like, how can you enforce a landscape plan? Like, say they said they were going to plant ten trees and nine of them died, like...
The owner said they were cut, not that they were...
No, I'm just, I'm making this, uh, just like, what happens if, like, the, when you build a building, like, you get your final inspection, right? And then you get occupancy permit, but what do we, what do we have to enforce a landscaping plan? Even if it was submitted when this pole was originally built?
Yeah, if, if we, if they had a landscaping plan, and it would just be like any other code, code compliance, if it was out of compliance, then we would do that.
I mean, we can have this, them go back, but ultimately, I think we're going to have to approve this, and we're going to approve it most likely with, you know, hopefully, color that would match, like the planning commission. I just don't see a way that we're going to not do this, but we can, we can kick it down the road, but... Can we, that sounds good, but can, nobody wants antennas in their backyard, I was contacted by some of the residents nearby. The, the owner said they'd be willing to plant mature trees that would help, um, block the view. He, the owner has them on his side to block the antennas that he's benefiting from by having those on his property financially. So, maybe just adding the condition, if that's okay, if that's authorized, that, condition the approval on him, um, working with an arborist to come up with a plan and plant mature trees that will provide visual relief immediately.
Can I make a comment real quick?
Sure.
So, someone buys a lot next to me, and they build like the ugliest house, and they paint it neon purple. I have no, I can't, I'm like, hey dude, you need to plant trees to block that house, like, at some point, we've got to, like, reasonably respect the landowner, right? Like, to me, I know this is an opportunity to take advantage of the change. It's, putting these things on here is not making it any uglier. It's already, it's already in its state that it's in. So, I'm like, I don't know if I want to hold up additional services that may benefit, you know, the city of Alpine, the people in Alpine, for making my neon purple-colored neighbor's house get painted. You know what I mean? That's kind of how I feel about it.
Yeah, I think the only difference I see that is the city has no control over what someone, how's their, how they paint their home. In this case, they do require the city approval for putting in the towers and a landscaping plan. Apparently, the trees died because the water lines were, were damaged.
Well, then can't we go back to the...
And he's willing to do it right now.
So, so why don't we go back to the owner and say, replace the trees?
Yeah, no, he's willing to do it, that's why I said, just make it as a condition that he, that he does what he said he would do.
So, okay, can we do that?
One way to accomplish that would just be to say that the approval is subject to, uh, a landscaping plan to be approved by city staff, if you're comfortable with staff making that determination.
And not to be overly prescriptive, but considering, um, the location and the watering issues, like, with an arborist, because you, you can't just plant anything at the top of the hill and expect it to live, so ju...
Sure.
I mean, it would be, yeah, foolhardy.
We, we decided in the planning commission, it was Lon Lott's fault, he's the one that, no.
I think Lon said he would help, right?
That was a joke, if Lon watches this, I, that was a joke.
No, he's got, I mean, he's got trees on the other side of the hill, I mean, it's doable.
Oh, totally, no, no, totally, no, I'm not saying it's not doable, I'm just saying, yeah.
He did say...
Those pine trees worked out great, just don't put something that needs a lot of water.
They did say they were, he did, he did, I think Kelly or Jason, when he brought it up, that he said the lines were, or maybe it's Brent, when he, when he said the lines were cut, when they originally did those by, and he just never replaced them, so... We did ask him too about moving the poles, I, I don't know if I brought this up already. Uh, they said with the, with the current way it works out, they had to be within a half a mile to a mile of, of the existing location, and there was really nowhere that they owned or could do that within that, within that distance.
So, as part of this, we're going to ask that, uh, Ryan, and to go back, come back with maybe an update to the ordinance, so that we
So, if we...
Make sure that stuff is camouflaged and done right.
So, if we table it, and then the ordinance changes, how does that work?
I think they'd have Steve can correct me on this, but I think they have a vested, vested interest in that, so it's...
Yeah, that's, could just be a separate issue of trying to fix our ordinance.
Yeah, just for future, right?
Yeah.
And is this applicant the same applicant that submitted that landscape plan originally? Could we, could we use this as a, hey, your landscape plan?
He did, it's, it's the same property owner that did it, um, so I, I think either way, we could say, hey, that landscaping plan needs to be, needs to be followed, so I think either way...
Especially since he's already said that he would do it, and I think it's reasonable to request that as part of the approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I can take a stab at it. I move to approve with conditions of the wireless cell tower equipment upgrade located at six ninety-four Rocky Mountain Drive, based on the findings condition listed in the staff report, with the additional conditions that the antennas and associated... based on the findings condition listed in the staff report, with the additional conditions that the antennas and associated equipment be painted to match the existing brown color of the pole. And that the petitioner or landowner submit a landscaping plan to be approved by the city staff on providing additional landscaping tall enough to, um, screen the existing antennas. Existing antennas?
Would you, would you say tall enough to screen, but, but short enough to not interfere with?
But short enough to not exceed the thirty feet.
At maturity.
I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Remler, seconded by Councilman Law. Any discussions? Okay, let's proceed with the roll call vote. Kelly.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Haneman, yes.
Jason Thielan, yes. Brent Remler, yes.
Jessica Smeuan, yes.
I'd like to move that we make it a five-minute bio break and return by no later than nine o'clock. Is that be okay?
You know, we have an ordinance where we have to end the meeting by nine, so if you do that, you also need a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, I move that we.
It needs to pass by a superintendent.
Okay.
And it needs to pass by a superintendent.
Two items on our agenda. I'm, I'm gonna, if I say thirty minutes, are you guys gonna support that? Okay, so we need a five-minute bio break and the meeting will adjourn no later than nine thirty.
A second.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Haneman, yes.
Jason Thielan, yes. No, that's incredible. I was gonna say no, but I decided not to. Second to last meeting.
He hates to extend.
He wants it to keep going. Brent Remler, yes.
Jessica Smeuan, yes.
Okay. Bio break for five minutes.
Is that technical?
I did.
The astronauts? I thought you were paying five million. I was like, yeah, come in there.
Do you have Japanese?
Is that like K K A?
Oh, yeah.
K K in the other.
Oh, it's hot. I'm sitting there, so much work, I can, I can crawl over there.
Okay, let's reconvene, guys. We've got two more items and a long one.
Good to see ya.
Okay, let's move on to item G, expanding the existing balcony.
This is the last one for me and then I promised to be quiet for the rest of the meeting, so I apologize. Uh, in our business commercial zone right now, we have certain setback requirements. We also have language in there that says where circumstances justify, the city council after recommendation from the planning commission can grant exceptions to those setbacks. What's, what this proposal is, is the Gold Bank building, uh, there, they wanna expand their current, uh, building. They wanna have a balcony, uh, with stairs leading to the second story. Um, right now they have a twenty-foot setback. What this proposal would do would have it be essentially on the lot line, uh, to expand that. Uh, it, it acts as a, a protection from the, from the elements as people go through that drive-through. Um, and adds, adds again, a second, second access to that, to that second story there. The planning commissioner reviewed this during their October seventh meeting. I'm gonna make this a little bigger so people can actually see it. They can press, they express concerns about the sec- setback proposed and the potential impact of placing e- essentially a solid wall along the property line. Uh, they, they, they talked about creating undesirable, it looked like an alleyway effect, uh, with the property there. They didn't think it meant the requirements for justified circumstance for the reduced setbacks, uh, and, and obviously a motion was, you know, see, uh, sent to recommend denial of this. Um, the applicant has submitted their original application and then a second, uh, an option B that's a little smaller with a, with a smaller landing on these, on these, uh, what's being proposed. Um, this isn't our gateway historic district. Those guidelines should be looked at as part of this. It matches the, what's being proposed matches the existing material on the building. For that, again, a public hearing was, was done, actually it was not done on this one. We didn't require a public hearing. Every other item on that agenda was a public hearing, but this one was not. So, and because this expands into a common area that's owned by the, the collective, uh, group there, there's a letter that we've, we've asked and it's been submitted, um, from those, from those app, from those, uh, or in ownership of that common area. That's why it's those guys instead of the ones to the north. The ones, the building to the north that would be impacted the most by this, isn't part of that, isn't part of that HOA essentially. So they weren't, they were required to, to sign off on that, uh, requirement there. The applicant submitted these, uh, justifications, uh, to include in this, why they, why they would like to extend this, um, and their reasoning behind that. That, that could be considered there. That's all I have on this. Uh, again, the, the criteria for this is where circumstances justify a, a reduction in those setback requirements. So, happy to take any questions, comments, or any other things you wanna say this time as part of this. I'm done. That's all I've got.
Is there, can you show some pictures?
Yep.
And then.
Yep, so, so this is, this is part of what they're, um, um, proposing. This isn't our gateway historic for the design standards. This was an original building and I can, just, this, the history of this, in April of two thousand and fifteen, uh, the city council approved, uh, this building to go in with the extended balcony. It had about a five-foot setback at that time, according to the minutes. But that was, that was approved in April of two thousand and fifteen. In August of two thousand and fifteen, the applicant came back and said, never mind, we don't wanna do that plan, uh, with the extended balcony. We want, uh, what's, basically what's there existing. The council approved the updated plan with that time without a balcony on there. So this has been, this part of it was reviewed and, uh, it's been included as an example for our, uh, gateway historic design standards.
And when you say this is on the property line, the balcony faces?
Yeah, so this is looking, if I'm standing on Main Street looking at the building, so it's looking west, um, on, on this, east, east, east.
So the balcony would be on the street.
So this would be going on the north side, yep.
But it would be on Main Street?
Yeah. No, 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 so it's on the north side, uh, not, it's not going towards Main Street. It's just going to the north. You can't see it from Main Street, but it's not, it's not coming towards Main Street.
Ryan could do a street view.
Yeah, yeah, we can, we can.
Yeah, I just, let's just make sure we understand what side of the building it's on.
Yeah, it'll be on that north side.
So it'll be the, on the property line.
On the north side.
Yep.
It's the property line that runs east-west.
What does that face? The little business, the other business area?
But you can see it on, when you're walk, like walking by it, or driving by Main Street.
If you're standing on the balcony, this is their view.
Yeah, right. Not sure why it stuck me in the parking lot. So this is the building as it is currently. Whoa, just kidding. It's gone.
Oh.
And now it's back. That's how, that's the magic here.
Okay, so there's already a balcony there.
So it'd be an extension this way going down like that.
Wait, really?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what they're asking for.
And that's a drive-through right there?
Mm-hmm.
There's a bank window under there, but I don't think it's currently in use, but maybe it's potential.
So that was my question. Is this an entitled drive-through? Do they have, um?
There is a bank window, right? That little black window?
I'm guessing it has less to do with the drive-through than it does with access to the second floor residential apartment.
Right.
Yeah. Drive-through, yeah. So they need the second story access, which, there'll be stairs that go up this so that people can come in this way versus go through the office building to get upstairs.
Yeah, if you can see.
That's the real motivation.
Yep.
And option A has a wider, it's hard to see because they're gonna use the same material, but.
This is option B.
Option A, sorry. If you'll go back, see how wide it is, but then option B narrows the supporting wall that's on the north side, right there.
Yeah, yep.
Oh, sorry, go down one more.
So this is, yeah, again, this is option A. This is what they wanna do. This is the existing deck. They wanna extend the deck and then have the steps go down.
Like lined steps and then.
And then option, oh, sorry.
Why, sorry, go to the right now. See how, um, wide that, wait, where'd it go?
Am I going?
Right here. It adds this whole wall of brick right on the property line.
Right. Is this for, like, they worried about in an emergency, like who's, like, I need to get out of here?
So I think really it's.
In a hurry.
Right now you have to go into the business and then go in elevators or, or stairs to go to the second story. I think they just want another, so you don't have to go through that. There's just one point of, you could go through from the outside there. That might be a, a secondary benefit of that, but I don't, I think that's kind of the main.
The initial option B, how it narrows the brick wall, like looking from the west elevation. And then also from the top, I don't know which, which you wanted to work out.
So this is option B again, looking, uh.
But there's a ground in the stairs, other than a straight shot of stairs. Wait, where's the?
Yeah.
A little landing.
Nope, I passed it.
Right, up against that fence. Oh, see, okay, right there.
Right there, yep.
So that one has a little landing and then I believe underneath is storage. Is that right?
Yeah.
And so there's stairs, then it turns versus a, a long stairway.
Going to the.
Also the wall, the west, the west facing is less obtrusive because I guess we could take a measurement. Cause I can see now there's measurements, so it's less, it'll just all right on the property line.
Oh, I didn't have my microphone on. So sorry. Um, in the original property line, when they, when they were approved for a five-foot setback, would that would have been, um, so, oh, here's the ten foot right there, so they would have been inside of this. Right? Like, see how it says ten foot setback right on the right hand?
Yep.
So if they would have come back halfway, that's what that was originally approved by the original city council? So they're asking for, to go beyond their original five foot?
Yep.
Okay. And then how wa- much does the wall shrink? It goes from X number of feet to eight feet?
Yeah, that's.
So it's less, so it goes down by six. Okay.
So on the people that have given consent and you've got the signatures, is that all the people to the north of you?
No.
Is it?
No, so this is, this is the, if you look at, we'll go to Google Earth. Hopefully the building's still there. If you look at, these are essentially two different, let's go north. These are two different essentially developments. So the, the consent they got, because this goes into what's, what's called a common area on the plat, because it extends into that common area, we had them get a letter from all the, everyone in the, in this subdi- not subdivision, in this development, saying they're okay with it going into that common area. These guys to the north are in a separate one, so there wasn't.
They're the ones that are affected, so.
Yeah.
Exactly. We don't, kinda don't care what the people in there.
Well, we just had them because it goes into a common area. It's like if you were building a house and you wanted it, well, this is a bad example too, but it just goes into a common area. They, they don't own that area, so they had to get approval to go, go into that area that they don't own. I, I understand that the north is the most impacted and, and everything, but we just, there's nothing that says that we would have to reach out to, I mean.
Well, on the north also, there's no sightlines from inside that building looking out that. It looks like it's just an access, I think, for like pets and kennelings.
They actually, there's actually, wait, if you go back, there's, I saw on the, drawn on their plans, that little, see that where it says window viewpoint from the building to the north? So the, the, what the window, if you look directly out the window, I noticed this, um, it doesn't really look at the balcony or the new wall. It just looks at the existing wall that's currently there. Am I interpreting that correctly, Ryan?
I, it sounds right to me, yeah, I don't, yeah.
See how it says window viewpoint from building to north?
Yeah, yep, yep. Oh, I get what you're saying. Yes. Yes.
Yeah, but I don't think that relates to the property on the north looking at, there's no.
There's the window right there.
See that window? What does it see? There's only one window.
When you look at the purposes of side yard setbacks, there are basically two. One is to ensure public health, safety, and welfare. Accident, uh, fire breaks, emergency access, utility access. Fire chief, police chief, police cars can get through this little, um, arch. Would a fire truck ever need to get through there? You go around the other way to get to it? So that doesn't really apply. But the other purpose is to maintain a consistent neighborhood appearance, access to light, air, privacy between adjacent properties. Get into what Jason was getting to. So I do think that properties to the north are affected and we don't know what their opinions are on that.
I, I think with that too, well, we can, we can certainly, if you guys wanna table this and have them go get notification of that, that's, that's an option that you could look at as well. Yeah, they, they are the ones, the reason we had them go get everyone else is because it was their property that's, that's included in that, where the ones to the north is a different development, so.
Right, but part of the main purpose of the setbacks is to protect the neighboring properties.
Yeah.
That's one of the main reasons for the setbacks.
Yep, and there's just where it's a different property, we're not required to do any other notifications part of that, so.
Can I, can I say something?
So, this is a planned commercial development. There's building pads here. It, it feels like building outside of that building pad would require an amendment to the building pad. Um, I mean, that the document that's signed by the other. I mean, that the document that's signed by the other, other owners isn't even a recordable or notarized document. It seems like there needs to be some kind of easement for this building or something more than what we have.
Yeah, and if, if you guys wanted to approve that, I think that's a very, I was just gonna pull up, uh, the county map just to kind of show you what, what it looked like. But yeah, I think is, if that were something to be approved, that would be something we would need to, need to have them do as well.
What is our obligation to the original plan approval? This is already outside of the five-foot setback, but if.
They came back and changed that plan and said, we don't want to do that anymore.
Okay, so that invalidates it?
Never approved.
Okay.
They had a plan and then they came back and changed it, now the revised one is approved.
So, so the revised plan is what we're obligated to, right? Which doesn't have a balcony.
That's what they did.
Right.
This is the unknown also, as we look at our Main Street historical, one of the things I'm really sensitive to and we've been working on is signage. And does it reflect what we're looking at? And is this an opportunity to have property owner change out signage conditioned upon us considering or approving this? I'm just strictly talking about design and elements, and when you come into Alpine, it's incongruent with a long-term vision of signage.
Because it's what, lit?
It's the lighting, and then I think it's on multiple sides. I think we actually changed that, we, that you, if you're a business, you have it on one side only. So the update in our sign code was just to keep signage minimal, because we're so small, we don't need sign, sign, sign.
Okay, but I think we're running into a procedural issue where I think Shane has a point that this is a change to the building envelope for this development. It's totally, and then I'm wondering, how does that parking work too? I don't know. Anyways, I think maybe what we need to do is we need to table this and then see if the owners are willing to get an amendment to the building site and, um.
You, you could also, as part of the, if, if you were to approve it, part of the, part of the condition is, and I think that's a fair point, we would have to do that.
I mean, are they, I mean, do they realize that that's what they're doing? I don't know.
There, there just needs to be something, because without a recorded document against this property, they're, like, and one of the other property owners could sell their building and there'd be nothing that follows a change in title, the way this is proposed.
Why don't we just table it until they have it and then they can bring it back?
A record, uh, something recordable, the county is that what you're asking for?
Yes.
Okay, I, if.
So changing to their building envelope, right, and that all the properties?
An amendment to the CCNRs of the development.
Yeah, or just whatever it is that we need to get.
A recordable document that.
Because right now, it's.
I just, if, if we were to ask to get a recorded plat, I, that's a lot of effort to do something that's not, you know what I mean?
Whatever we need, that's recordable, right?
Yeah, yep.
Just them signing, it's okay to upload, something that can be carried on with the property, no matter who the ownership goes to.
Right.
Likely their CCNRs would dictate a process for what happened, a change to common area, right, Steve?
Yes.
And they should follow that.
Just, um, this was not, this was denied, right, by our planning commission?
Recommended to deny, yep, yep.
Not, yeah, I'm sorry, not recommended. So, um, to ask for all of that and then turn around and, and for us to deny, for whatever reason.
If you're gonna deny it, then make a motion to deny it and let's go through it.
Yeah, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make, is if we, if we want to approve this, let's, we can go through that, but if it's not.
If we want to prove, if we're moving in the direction of approving, we would table so we could get the documents in place. But if we're just gonna deny, they don't need to go through those steps. Okay, thank you.
I just, yeah, okay, so, yeah. Is there a motion?
Ryan, can you go back to the motion thing?
Yep.
I move to deny the requested side yard setback exception at three thirty-three South Main Street based on the finding that proposals not sufficiently justify the reduction from the required ten-foot setback standard under Alpine City Code three dot zero seven dot zero five zero.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, that motion fails. Is there another motion?
I'll move to table the requested side yard setback exception at three thirty-three South Main Street based on the need for a recorded document that will transfer with property ownership. What was that language, Shane?
Just so that the change will follow the title and it's, maybe somebody down the road sees it as unauthorized structure in, uh, common area.
Okay, and, and to bring the building up to current code guideline, the current sign code guidelines for our Main Street Historic.
Is there a second?
Can I ask for an additional condition? Or is it after the second first?
You'll have to ask her, yes.
Just the, I would, I would be interested in knowing the, the opinion of the property immediately to the north that abuts this, this property line. Just to get their concurrence as well.
So a notification of property owner to the north?
Yeah.
I think notification.
Notify and maybe input or opinions?
Yeah.
Are you amenable to that?
Yes.
Okay, it's been moved.
Shane, you, you brought, sorry, I'm losing my voice. You brought up that the document they brought forth at.
Wait, we got a motion on the table.
Where everybody's signed.
Excuse me, we got a motion on the table. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. You brought up that, all the, everyone's sign that's not like a legally viable document. Is there anything more required or would that fall under their CCNRs?
Well, it should, look, all of Steve's.
So typically, in a, in a development that shares common areas, the common areas are not owned by a particular property owner. And so, you would have to amend the document that created those common areas. Typically, that's CCNRs that designate the common area. To change that to be owned by a particular owner or that everyone agrees that the common area includes this new structure and the steps and all of that. But that would be something that would, would be done, you know, at the, at the development level, not, not the city.
So that's not our jurisdiction?
Well, but we can still require that, because how can you approve something that the applicant doesn't own?
I see, okay. Do we need to add that? It was my only question then.
So they could just bring proof of amended CCNRs, or that they went through that process as part of this.
Well, and basically, wouldn't they have to deed the property to them?
Or if they include it in the common area, then they would all have joint responsibility to maintain it and liability. So that might be a, an issue for the other owners.
So is that a fourth condition?
No, that, that's just part of, that's part of the, getting the, the other owners to agree, to amend those CCNRs.
Any other questions? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
I have one more question.
Okay, yes.
So, city council members, did, did the planning commission deny this?
They recommended denial.
Seven to, seven to zero?
Yes.
Yes, they did.
Just checking.
Yeah, I don't.
But, and so, by going, if they go and get this documentation, it sounds like you guys want to override the seven to zero planning commission.
Seems like their main objection.
Not that that, that hasn't happened before, I'm just.
Yeah, well, their main objection was, it looks, it'll look like an alley, it's a visual, it's an aesthetics thing, and I'm not sure if I agree with that.
Well, which is ironic that Jessica wants them to fix the signs, but then wants to add this crazy thing to the side that goes all the way to the property.
And have it go all the way to the property line.
It's kind of ridiculous, that's all I'm saying.
But, but did, did the planning commission see A, N, V, or only A?
Only A.
Only A, just, just to clarify. The first one was pretty bad. So I think that modifications make it a little more palatable.
Did the modification stop it from going to the property line?
No.
No, but it's not.
Does modification stop it from looking like an alleyway?
Yes, because it's not, it's not as wide at the top or at the bottom.
There's an arch that people drive through still?
I like arches.
Well, the planning commission gave guidance, and so applicant came back with guidance from planning commission.
Yes, there's feedback.
For the recommendation of denial. So they reacted to and brought back something else.
But you want to force them to fix their signs?
I want it to brought up to current code.
So you realize the building next to it has like green awnings with the name on it on the side, on the back?
It's a process. If we've got to start somewhere, it's a process.
Wow, okay.
What are you giving up in the process?
Yeah, I'm just, this is, there's no common sense here at all.
And Mayor, the applicant is here if we want to hear any, anything that they have to add or say. Obviously, that's, that's up to you.
Anyone have a question for the applicant? If not, let's proceed with a roll call vote.
I'd like to hear what he has to say, he came up wanting to say something.
Specifically, I'd like to hear about the issue of the residential safety. Because we did approve a residential above with like very difficult access, which I'm concerned about. And I'd like to hear from our fire chief if that would be a problem.
Wait, we did approve a residential above?
Isn't that what that is?
Condo, yeah, back in, I think it was twenty twenty, that was approved.
Oh, that's the use of it?
It's owner occupied, right?
Has to be owner occupied according to our code, right?
So we can, we can look into it, yeah. I, I wasn't here, so I don't, I don't know what it is.
So he lives up there. Can you come up and address that? Thank you. If you could state your name and your address?
Yes, Larry Hilton, and this is three thirty-three South Main. I live in Highland, just a little bit south of fifty-four fifty-two Stone Creek Drive.
This is your building, but you live in Highland?
Yes. So the thing I wanted to point out about the CCNRs is that we do have, um, in the CCNRs, a recognition of the ability to, to put, um, extensions out from the building that then can receive lateral support from, from the common areas. So that's actually in the CCNRs right now. Um, I do agree that I think it's a good idea to go ahead and get something recorded that would actually go with it, so I'm, I'm fine with that. As to the safety, I don't think we really were able to flesh that out in front of the, uh, planning commission. There's really some very significant issues there. Um, I see we have, you know, limited time, but I did bring my safety expert with me if, uh, if that's okay, just to kind of address that. Because, um, the way that this came up was, we ended up with a dwelling, which is a separate condo above and then commercial below. That really hasn't been a problem because it's been the same entity that's been in that for ten years. But a few months ago, they moved across the parking lot. And so now we have a more limited activity in the commercial space below and the upstairs has been vacant for months. And there's really no way to make that usable, um, other than people having to go right through a highly secure area where you have to go through four interlocking doors. And we've had instances where when we had, you know, both of them up there, we had people locked upstairs because the, um, the insurance company required that certain things, certain doors locked down when, when, uh, various measures are in place. And so people have gotten locked up there. So the upstairs is kind of unusable right now without a separate access to it. It's unusable by a separate entity. It could be used by the same people downstairs. So, so that is, that was an insurance requirement that we were unaware of, because it's a highly secure facility. I, I think you're maybe all aware of, we keep precious metals there and, and, you know, we have had issues with deliveries too because people come and they put the delivery in the drive-through. And it's precious metals, you immediately have to get it inside. And if it's snowing or raining or whatever, the little balcony we put there doesn't provide enough protection. So there's really both reasons that we need this. And the, the other thing I just mentioned on, um, the Plan B, kind of the, the genesis, the inspiration for that was a state statute that says that a, um, for a dwelling, um, as long as the landing is a certain size that a city can't, um, preclude someone from invading the, um, from encroaching into the setback for ingress or egress. And so I know, I don't believe your, um, council has had a chance to look at that. So I'm not putting that forward as the basis for that, but that was the inspiration for, that's why we have a thirty-one square foot landing which complies with this state law, that, and it's allowed to have stairs. So that's just kind of an issue that, you know, that we could look at. And so I just wanted to kind of put forward in something that, that's called an allowable feature. So the building to the north, they have access to their basement that encroaches on their ten-foot setback. So we're just saying, hey, we'd like equal treatment so we can encroach into the, into the setback to have, uh, ingress and more especially egress. Because if you want to hear it, uh, I've got my expert here who could tell us about various scenarios where someone could be locked up there. Be out of fire, they couldn't get out, so.
No, I, I get that. Steve, is that?
May I address that code provision?
Is that law, is that accurate?
I've actually had a chance to review that. There are a couple of reasons why I don't think that statute applies here. Number one, it doesn't, um, it's talking about the rear setback of a residential building lot or parcel. So this is if somebody builds a balcony off the back of their home and their home is only thirty feet or twenty feet from the backyard. If it's only thirty-two feet, the code, you know, we can't prohibit that if somebody wants to build a deck off the back that's raised. Uh, and it also doesn't apply to a historic district within the municipality. And I understand this is with, within our gateway historic district. So it, it's a good point, it's a fair point, but it legally is not binding.
So I just said that was the inspiration for, for that.
Okay, sir, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
So you own the building?
Yes.
And do you live in the residential part of that building?
No, no, I live in Highland, I, we, we are, my wife and I are thinking about, you know, using it, uh, for, like, you know, before we leave on a mission, when we come back, just have a place to kind of camp.
So are you gonna rent it out or is it gonna remain vacant?
Um, I think that probably the most likely use would be for business guests that come to, to visit and we'd have a place where we could put them up and, um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna preclude the building because I don't believe it has to be owner occupied, that's nothing I've ever been aware of. But, um, I believe that it could be rented out just like, you know, any other, um, building could be.
Ryan, could you clarify that?
So with accessory apartments, which are required to be, uh, like attached or within the building, that is a requirement that, that it's, uh, that it's owner occupied?
Yeah.
So that'd be something we need to, like I said, this is, the, a condo side of this was approved in twenty twenty as far as anything compliant stuff, we need to, we would need to double check.
I'm wondering if that's part of, in the business commercial district, we have an allowance, that's how, um, what's his name? Link Kings was able to put a home there, it's because he's the owner of a business.
Two, yeah, and if they're two separate, that's a different than if they're, uh, an accessory apartment.
I don't think so. I think it's the same. I don't think.
No, our, our code specifically says if they're two different, like if it's a business and a residential, then that's okay. Doesn't, doesn't say anything about owner occupied or anything, it's if it's an accessory apartment, then it becomes.
One, just one more question, sorry, thank you. Is that whole upstairs or the whole top floor, is that a contiguous unit?
No, so there's, so in the building, you've got three different condominiums.
Okay, okay.
So the first one is three forty-one, and that is downstairs and upstairs, and that is totally separate from three thirty-three by a dividing wall. And then you've got two condominiums in three thirty-three at the upstairs, which was, um, done as, and I, I don't believe that was done as an accessory unit. That's not the way we applied for it. It was just that in the business commercial area, you can have a dwelling, uh, not on the ground floor, but on the second floor up. At least that's how it was at the time that we did it. So I, I don't believe that we went under the accessory in it, um.
Okay, so there's, so there's three units in there.
Yeah.
Then now you're saying, are two of them dwellings? One of them is?
No, just one.
Just one of them is.
Yeah, just the one, just the upper level of three thirty-three.
Okay.
Yeah.
And there's, and there's no, so that configuration, that balcony area is really the only piece where you could, like I'm saying, you can't punch a hole through the back of the building or something.
You'd be going into somebody else's, yeah, you'd be going.
Okay.
So that would, that's kind of the only way. And I think that there, I don't think that the planning commission really understood, you know, that these are, this is a very serious, you know, human safety thing that you need to be able to get out. And the insurance that's required for the high-security area won't allow us to unlock those doors. So either you've got to say, okay, we're just gonna throw away the whole downstairs and have to move, you know, all those pressures. So either you've got to say, okay, we're just going to throw away the whole downstairs and have to move, you know, all those precious metals elsewhere, and, you know, people are going to lose jobs and all that kind of stuff, uh, and we've, uh, or we get access out. And again, you know, the building to the north, they're in, they're, they've encroached in with what I would call an allowable feature, which is, uh, egress, and I think this would be an allowable feature that can go. And, and if we, you know, i- if we had a, a five-foot setback, that just means that our, our, um, drive-through would have had to been that much narrower.
Yeah.
You know, so we built the drive-through out, so.
Okay, so we are past our time limit.
Yeah.
Um, does anyone want to make a motion to extend the time?
I'll make a motion.
Yep.
I'll make a motion based on Councilwoman Heniman's of not being able to extend the meeting past nine thirty PM. That, I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? Motion fails.
Wait, I'll second that.
There's a second.
Have to move it again. I asked for a second. He didn't speak up.
We have to discuss the last agenda item.
I make a motion to extend council meeting until the business of the city is complete, if that ends up going to ten thirty. But the priority of the business of the city should prevail.
I'll second that, Jessica.
Okay, roll call vote.
Because Jessica worded that so well. Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Heniman, yes.
Jason Thielen, no.
Brad Romler, yes.
Jessica Smioun, yes.
Okay, a motion passes. Let's move forward.
I would still like to hear the input about the necessity of access from our fire chief. He sat here for so long, and I'd like.
We didn't vote on the motion, the table motion.
Yeah, we still have a table and discussion.
I know, we're still in discussion of the table.
I, I second.
Couldn't be discussed.
No, that's not true. That's what I was told, but when I looked it up, you can discuss. I know, I was, I know. I was told once it's tabled, you're supposed to go directly to a vote, but that's not true.
I didn't take enough caffeine to go much longer.
Okay, Chief, you have a question?
Chief, can you address the sec- safety issue of having people that you cannot access that stands between four locked doors?
Yeah, you can't have people that can't get out of the building, or we can't get in.
That's what I thought.
Right, so.
Would you be in favor of this access? Would it be like safe, or?
But, okay, I'm sorry.
Some kind of access.
Did you, I'm sorry, sir, did you build this, did you build this structure?
Yes.
So you knew when you built it, that that's how you were building it?
Yes, but we didn't know what the insurance requirements were going to be.
The locked doors are additional.
The locked, the locked doors, and we also had, did not, at the time that we built it and got our building plan, we didn't know that we were actually going to end up with three condominiums. We thought it was going to be two. But because of the way it was funded, we went with three condominiums, and so now we have these, this situation. So it was, it was unforeseen circumstances that kind of put us where we are today.
So when you say condominiums, I'm thinking living structures, but these are not, these are businesses?
Commercial condominiums, and so there's a residential condominium and two commercial condominiums.
Oh, okay.
Because I think the buildings to the north, I, I believe those are condominiums as well, so that you have a big building that's broken up into, uh, different ownership.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion.
So the building has four owner, or three owners?
As far as the owner occupied, that's for the residential side.
Okay, okay.
If it's a business, yeah, just to clarify, that's on the residential side. If it's a commercial one, it doesn't, we don't have any requirements to be owner occupied.
Okay, we've got a motion to table. Can we, um, let's have a roll call vote.
I don't understand what Ryan, I don't understand what Ryan just said.
Until they get the CCNR.
Do you want to read it again?
So with our accessory structure stuff, it has to be owner occupied, like to live in it. So if you put an apartment above a business right now, you have to live in it.
Yeah.
Um, if it's a commercial building, you don't, it doesn't have to be owner occupied. If there was no residential side of it, we're just talking basic commercial, then yeah.
Oh, oh, oh. If there's a business in there, the owner of the building doesn't have to occupy the business.
Right, right, yeah, just to clarify that.
Residential unit inside of a business building, the owner has to occupy the unit.
So they can't use it for clients that come into town?
As of right now, in my mind, that would fall under a short-term rental.
That's like a rental.
Yeah.
But if they're hosting, if they're hosting the clients though?
We're addressing those as separate, and we're looking at those as separate, separate items.
Okay.
Guys?
Jessica, would you be willing to amend your table?
To what?
To just say that it's contingent upon city staff verifying what exceptions were given in twenty twenty, and if a non-owner occupied exception was given.
But if he wants to host out-of-town clients, that's not.
Then it needs like a hotel license or something.
No, that's a.
That's just a guest that stays in your basement.
No, it's not. Well, no, it's, that's a residential building?
It's commercial, it's non-commercial.
Okay, so to, to provide overnight stays for guests in a commercial building? There is like all kinds of Utah laws and regulations.
But he's not charging his clients a fee to stay in his own house.
It doesn't matter. There's like, there's, it's not a house. It's a commercial building.
So no, hey Kelly, you know what? Kelly.
It's a residential condo.
We'll look at that independent, Kelly. I think that's acceptable.
Jessica is not accepting your suggestion, so let's vote on the table.
Kelly Law, no.
We're quoting the table, right, with the conditions you listed? Thank you for the reminder. Chrissy Heniman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Brad Romler, yes.
Jessica Smioun, yes.
Okay.
And get clarification on this owner occupancy thing for them and us.
We've looked at that as a separate issue, like not, not, not with this, but a separate issue that we're, we're clarifying.
Let's move on to the last item. Discussion for the Lone Peak Public Safety Fire District Assessment. We've got Mayor of Highland City Kurt Ossler, and then Mayor, is it Pro Tem? No, Mayor Lach, sorry. Mayor Lach, Brittany, Brittany, what's her last name?
Not yet.
Bills.
Bills.
Mayor Bills.
In the audience.
She's not elected yet.
No one's running against her.
Oh, mayor.
Oh, how would that be?
There might be a lot of right hands.
Un, what do you call that? I don't know. Uncontested. Perfect.
Which a lot of them are. Okay, so let's, Shane, do you want to?
Okay, yeah. So background on this, um, Highland City has requested that changes be made to the way the Lone Peak Public Safety District, uh, Fire Department budget is allocated between the cities. Highland feels that Alpine should be paying a higher percentage of the total, uh, budget for fire. Uh, we're only talking fire right now, not police or admin. Um, which that budget for FY twenty-six is a little over four point three million. Um, the current allocation for fire is distributed as follows. Ten percent is split fifty-fifty, um, between each city. Uh, the remaining ninety percent, forty-five percent goes, uh, is allocated based on population. The other forty-five percent is based on ERUs. Um, a door, whether it's a condo, twin-home door, a single-family, whatever duplex, uh, is one ERU, and then ten thousand square foot of commercial or like church or other type buildings like that is equivalent to one ERU. Um, some of the variables that have been considered for changing that formula include population, ERUs, taxable value, market value, call volume. Um, Highland has proposed a funding formula that's ba- formula that is based solely on taxable value. Um, basically providing the argument that, um, many districts, um, kind of operate this way. And many of them have taxing authority as well. This method would shift approximately two hundred and eighty thousand from Highland to Alpine, um, based on this current year's budget. Um, another option that was discussed, we've had several meetings on this, um, would involve splitting the staffing portion of the budget, which for this current budget year, in fires, about eighty-one percent of the total, uh, based on staffing provided at each station. Which currently, we're staffed at four and four, but if we average like seven point two, there's four in Alpine currently, three in Highland. So this out, this method would increase Alpine's share of the allocation beyond the taxable, uh, property value option. Um, Highland has left this, uh, option for taxable value on the table through the end of this month. Uh, we do have a meeting, not today, it's actually the thirtieth, different than when I, I had to typo in my staff report. Uh, so Thursday morning, we'll be meeting to have a work session to discuss this further. Any change to the funding formula will require an amendment to the interlocal agreement, which would require, uh, the approval of both councils. There is a provision in the interlocal agreement that says it requires four votes, um, of the board to change the funding formula. We've never looked at that as the sole approval. We've always understood, maintained it would have to come back to both city councils, because it would be a change to the interlocal agreement. My understanding, the only way to change that is the same way as created, which was approval by the councils. Um, but, um, we received a letter, uh, late, just before the meeting, where Highland's attorney questions that portion of the, or that statement or whatever, that portion of the interlocal. Um, so we need to, we've met with everyone kind of individually, or, or, you know, with two at a time or whatever. Our hope is to go into our meeting Thursday morning, um, ready to discuss whatever change would be appropriate, and then take it through the process from there. So, is there any questions on that?
What's the process in the meeting to approve or not approve the changes?
Um, so, this will just be a, a work session, as I understand it's been put out there. So there really won't be a vote this meeting, but at the next meeting, which I don't have the date right in front of me, it would be an agenda item, probably an action item at that meeting, the twelfth, okay. So, the s- the section in the interlocal agreement reads as follows. Other funding alternatives or allocation methods may be adopted by the governing board with four members voting in favor. And that, that part's kind of open interpretation. We're a little bit, in a little bit of a weird spot right now, because the district attorney is also the Highland City attorney. Uh, we currently have an RFP out, um, to get separate counsel for the district. Just because of situations like this, to be fair to both cities, uh, it would be an independent voice and recommendation, so.
Where are we in that process, do you know? Have they?
The RFP's issued right now, so it's due, I think, next week maybe. I'd have to look at the date for sure, I can't remember it.
You mentioned something about a deadline from Highland. Explain that.
Um, so this option, and I'm talking for these guys who are here, but this option they threw out there, uh, to base the funding formula on taxable value. Their council has met and said, you know, we'll throw this out on the table through the end of this month.
And then what happens after this month?
Then that might not be on the table anymore. They might look for something else, and.
What does that mean exactly?
Well, ultimately, I guess if we can't agree, there, there could be a separation or whatever that means. You know, it, it could potentially be bad for both cities, because I think even Highland, the Highland representatives would tell you, they've told us in public meetings that they feel like we're better together. Geographically, you know, if we work with someone else for fire service, um, they have to go through another city to get to us. There's just reasons why it, it can be better, and Chief probably can speak to a lot of those benefits better than I can. But.
I'm just trying to understand the deadline, though. Is, is there, is there like, there's, but there's, it feels like a threat, but I don't know what's attached to the threat.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, well, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think it's more of, this is, this is the way they s- they see it being fair to their taxpayers, and they're, they're, they see the value of the relationship, and they are offering this proposal, but not, but saying that if we don't agree to it, then they're probably not going to offer that same proposal in the future. And that could mean, we, we talked at the last meeting, you weren't there, so I was representing as the alternate, and we started talking about the eighty-one split, and that would be more costly to Alpine, so maybe they would move to that point. Or they could just exercise their rights under the interlocal agreement and terminate, and that's what, we have a two-year period that, that we would stay together while we divide up assets and try to find our own way. So I think that's where they're coming from.
So, your understanding?
Yeah, but like the eighty-one split is, it's not that much, I mean, really, the difference in the cost is pretty similar, right, what they're proposing.
What was it? It was like three hundred and?
I think, I think it was more like, I think it was more like a half million.
Yeah.
I don't remember it being that much higher.
Those numbers, you guys remember? I, I pull.
Do you have that spreadsheet?
I just remembered as we were discussing that meeting, the number just kept getting higher, and I'm like, so that's what I asked, is, is that, because Highland has already approved this on their city council. I just asked, is that still an option? And they said yes, but then they opposed the deadline.
And you've, and do you feel that this is fair for Alpine citizens?
Some, I, I think we need to be stewards of our residents and the taxpayers, just like they do. Um, I think just looking at the, the value and speaking with the chief and some of the council members, try and, I still haven't seen an alternative that would be better. I don't, I don't.
I, I have. I've seen an alternative that's better.
Okay, good.
Exactly what we have right now.
Well, sure.
I, and there's a lot of things in between that and where we're at too. There's like, like a billion different, depending on if you want to go by pennies and nickels or.
But I don't, I don't think we should just, we're kind of being rushed right now.
I don't know if we are, but we've been negotiating and talking about this since March, I think.
Who has?
Mayor Merrill.
The board.
Um.
Okay, well, thanks, but I'm not on the board.
I'm not either. I was just there listening.
Yes, Jason.
Would it be okay if, um, Mayor Ossler could answer that question? He mentioned, he came, kind of gave a face like he's willing to come up and talk about.
Come on up, Kurt.
It's your last chance at fame, before you disappear into the night.
Could state your name and address, Mayor?
Okay, thank you for letting me come tonight. Hey, Kurt Ossler, Highland City Mayor, Highland City resident. Um, do you want my address?
No, it's okay.
Okay. Yo, I think, we, we appreciate, I want to go on, yes, we do see a value, and every council member I talk to sees a value in being partners with Alpine. So that's not a, I want you to understand, that's not something we're trying to say, hey, we want to try. Jason, I think you have a really good question. Why would that be something that was timed? And that is probably, I'll, I'll answer how I felt it. What's happened is I've had, we, we all have councils that kind of will shift a little bit. And when it got into the, uh, with our council, the reason, and I kind of tried to convince our council to be able to accept the property tax value, and some of that was coming from what we were hearing from the board. What we heard from the board was, you know, as we're going through negotiations in May, June, hey, we need to act like a district. We need to do some funding like a district, so that's why we went and looked at that funding mechanism. Now, going back to your question, was that when we looked at it, we felt like that that was justifiable to our residents, that we use a property tax value. However, when we looked at the staffing and where the cost is, because each city will have a cost of a station. So, you know, if they have four in each station, you go, okay, that's a cost of four per station, that's that one eighty-one percent of the cost, and that's probably where you're getting up. And I can't remember, Shane, if the, the number was a half a million or what that dollar amount was.
Roughly that.
And so what happened is I started having some council shift, saying, hold it, is it fair, uh, that, that, we should look at each one covering their station, and then we cover administration cost. And, and when I started to shift, I got my council to agree to keep the proposal for the property tax value until the end of October, because I've had some council members that have shifted on me, saying, I'm not sure that's the most fair for Highland. And I think we're trying to be a good partner, and that's why we're looking at the property tax value. So why is Highland maybe, if it's okay, uh, Mayor Merrill, can I just share a little bit, maybe for the Highland, why this has come up? Right now, we are staffing at eight, eh, with our firemen. The proposal was to go to nine. Now, when we staff at eight, seventy percent of the time is what we're hearing from Chief Patton, we will drop below at seventy percent, we'll only go down to seven. When we have seven firemen on, in the staff, Highland has three, and Alpine has four. Now, I always thought, okay, we still can do our emergency call. Now, I always thought, okay, we still can do our emergency calls, we have an ambulance out there, but then we've come at, based off of some calls and some residents sharing, and you can ask the chief to verify, actually what happens is Highland does, has to have one of the ambulants come out of Alpine to cover the Highland call. And so we had had the desire to try to get to nine, and so we're going, okay, if we get to nine, we're looking, and now we're, I'm just, I'm gonna share from the Highlands' eyes, and I recognize it's a hard situation, but from a Highlands' eyes, if we're staffing at nine, Highland's paying for six, we pay sixty-five percent of the district's budget, and Alpine's paying for three. However, you're getting the staffing as if you're at four always, you're, and you're always getting that staffing, and some of the reasons, and I'm, I'm sensitive to Alpine, you're further away from mutual aid, so, meaning that if there's a call, that, that we, Highland's closer to Lehigh and American Fork, and so we can get mutual aid to us faster than what Alpine can, so that's why they're staffing a little bit that way. But from a Highland standpoint, we're going, hold it, we're paying the majority of the fees, but yet we're getting the less service, in, in the way the staffing is, and so, we talked about doing a strong arm to the, to the district, saying, okay, we want the staffing then to be in Highland. And then we started thinking about, what the concern was, is that our chief is saying we need to be at nine, that we need to have four per station to be able to address the calls, and so we felt like we needed to get to nine, and so some of the request of the new cost is because we're trying to get to nine, so we're actually always at eight. Now, the property tax value, if you go back to when Highland and Alpine joined, and I think Shane, was that about ninety-five, is that?
I think it was back about then.
It's interesting, the value and how they did it was property tax. It wasn't till Cedar Hills started to come in as a third entity that we moved off the property tax value, and then that's when they did the formative change. Well, now Cedar Hills is no longer with us, and so, you know, so coming back, Jason, I can answer your question, it was, my council started to change on me, where we were at the proposal using the property tax, when they started saying, hold it, if we have four in Alpine and four in Highland, it seems we need to cover the staffing of four and four, and then we share the administration, where if you still look at the property tax value, there's still a heavier burden on the Highland, and I've got my council to agree to stake keep with that proposal till October, but based off my council's recommendation, they said that offer would not be there, 'cause they'd like to discuss another proposal if Alpine's not favorable towards that proposal.
And if it doesn't happen in October, and, and would, and, and, and we're not gonna agree to have it go up any higher, would you guys pull out and start your own, and disband Lone Peak Public Safety Board?
That, that will be something our council will have to discuss, has it been discussed? Yes, I'm sure, it's something we've had a look at, what the cost might be for us to go on our own, some of it's to be able to get, if we're paying, if we're gonna already be paying for six, so if we go to nine, and we're paying for six, that's what we believe we probably need to have at our station six, and we recognize that we'll probably drop down to five, so we don't see the gap being great if we go on our own. However, I think talking to every council person, going back to my first comment, we see value in staying together, there's synergy, there's double calls, there's times that you have, with, at first, so if you go back, and maybe we can have Chief Patton, uh, address this, I always heard that our double calls were about seven percent of the time, that we always had two calls going on at the same time in the district. I understand it's now moved up to ten or twelve percent, our call volume's a little higher. We have safety in having us as a district to help in covering each other if we're having things, you also get to have better training, you're gonna have, if, if you have that time off, you're able to kinda shift, where if we all go on our own, we're all gonna struggle where someone wants time off, we're gonna struggle with certain things, and so, I think there's great value in staying as a district. I, you know, your question is, would Highland consider it? Yeah, if we probably are gonna be paying for six firemen, and we're only gonna, and, and we're not gonna have that same staffing down there, then that's something that Highland have to discuss, as, as well as I think Alpine have to discuss. I recognize the cost increase, I understand, hold it, what does that mean? But we're just trying to also be fair to our residents, and I'm trying to be sensitive to what's going on here in Alpine, I'm not trying to hurt the Alpine residents, but we're just trying to be fair. Currently, we are seeing staffing when we're eight, the Highland's at three, and Alpine's at four, but yet we're paying sixty-five percent of the time. So what that means staffing-wise, Alpine's getting fifty-five percent of staffing up here, does, does that make sense, that that's kinda...
Thing is, is I don't think, it's never intended to be an Alpine Fire Department and a Highland Fire Department, that's not what it is. It's Lone Peak Public, and they work with each other, but they're not designated just to cities, and so, that's the intent of it, but it seems like we're positioning them as just city, and that's how we're comparing them.
But you're bringing up great, that's why the property tax value makes sense, you're the one that kept pushing, saying, we need to act as a district, function as a district, when we look at other districts, they function as a property taxing value, and that's how they do it. So Jason, you're the one that kinda brought the idea up, just about the...
Yeah, I think you're mixing up what you said, I mean, I, to me, it's about...
Yeah, no, he did bring up property value, I think the issue is...
Never, ever, and it's, it's basically call volume, you know, where's the calls going, how can we do call volume into it? That was the, that was the area that I changed off of the ECUs and population and, and that.
So, so let me ask you, off call volume, if we say we fund off call volume, does that mean that we don't, that, if there's calls going on, that we don't have any base cost? That's where, that's where my council said that eighty-one percent is base cost, we have fixed cost if we have a call or not. It's not based off call volume, it is based off fixed cost, so if we had no calls tomorrow, I'm still paying for those eight firemen. That's the problem with the call volume, is that we can't adjust, if we can say, okay, we're gonna charge twelve hundred dollars per call per city, but you can't do that, because that's not, we have set cost in operating the district, and that's why we're trying to cover some of the things.
So, is my understanding that the eighth person was already approved, it just hasn't been filled?
It's the ninth, ninth.
Already there, the ninth person.
The ninth person, okay.
So the ninth has been approved, it's based up on, we do not hire the ninth until we work through this funding mechanism.
Okay.
So that's why, when you bring it up, we started talking about this in March, it was, we talked pretty good in April, we had work sessions in May, we had work sessions in June, Highland, I'm gonna be honest, has been patient, when you're asking about why, we've been pretty patient, and here we are at the end of October, and we've been trying to work through this, and I feel like we've been patient.
Okay.
And so I think there's a time where going, there needs to be a decision made, so we know what direction to go to as a city, and I'm not, that, you say, is that pressure? Well, I think we've given the six months to try to work through this, we don't know where we're at, and so, but I appreciate...
So, if there's, if there's an incident in Highland, and more than the three or four people are needed, do, do not the Alpine people respond to that?
Yeah, so right now...
So, why, why are you dividing it on Alpine has four, Highland has three, does not, do not we have seven or eight?
So, we all look also on response, so if, and if we got our chief, he can answer all those, so here we have a call that happens in Highland, we jump in a fire truck, and we go to that call. We don't have the ambulance there, we have to have the ambulance come out of that, 'cause you have to have, based on what the call volume is, so that's, that's the one of the concerns. We always thought they jumped in the ambulance, until we started, we had a resident that had a medical thing, and they came and asked, why did the ambulance come out of Alpine? Well, now, I, I recognize there's some circumstances in that one call there individually...
Is that the one where they came out of Cedar Hills, not Alpine?
Uh, no, they were close to the Cedar Hills, they could see, they could see the Cedar Hills station, and they kept wondering why they weren't coming for the Cedar Hills station.
Come from Alpine.
And then, but, when the fire truck came, that was a Highland, I believe, was a Highland fire truck, and I think it was a, the ambulance out of Alpine, and the resident kinda says, why are we waiting, why didn't they, and I agree, it was, they kept looking at this, the station there, because Highland is on the corner of Canal Boulevard where American Fork built a station, and they kept on thinking, why did they not come up for that station?
So did Alpine, did the city of Alpine usurp an ambulance or something, or why is it here and not there?
That will be the chief.
Okay, so that's a chief decision, it's not, the residents of Alpine didn't deman, demand that the ambulance be here, or anything like that, okay.
And you're, you're, so Kelly, good question, that was, 'cause we kept on thinking, our chief has been saying, the reason is, is because you're further away from mutual aid to what we're hearing, but I, I'll let Chief Patton maybe address some of those aspects if he hasn't, of, 'cause that was one of the things, he says, hey, I'll need the board, if you wanna move the staffing down to Highland to make sure there's four, and then there's three, and, and Alpine, that was actually one thing we talked pretty heavy about, is going, okay, to keep costs down, maybe we do it that way, but we're also sensitive, we need to get to nine, that no matter, we're gonna have a chief, whoever the fire chief is, is always gonna say you need to have four per station, so when you go on the fire call, you already have four present, so you can have two go in and two stay out, that's what I've been hearing this whole time, 'cause we talked about with me and Mayor Merrill's, let's go ahead and make the shift, we'll just do three in Alpine, and have the four in Highland, alls we did is we shift the problem, now that you have three up here, you're gonna wait for a Highland ambulance, you know, is it, and so, we felt like, let's resolve the issue now.
Okay, so if we went, if we go to nine, can you not go to nine under the current funding agreement? Like you're, like it's impossible?
They don't want to.
Okay, so they don't want to.
Well, it's...
Well, we're just paying more, we're paying sixty-five percent of it, but we're not, I mean, you could talk about staffing as a district, is it fair to our residents, I'm talking Highland?
Yeah.
How's it fair to us to be paying for the six firemen, and yet we're having them sit up here, you know, they're, they're...
Because, well, what's the, what's the difference in population between the two cities?
We're about twenty-three thousand, I think you guys are about ten.
We're about ten.
Twelve.
So, we're...
Eleven. Probably more like eleven.
Eleven.
Down to eleven thousand?
Yeah. I thought we were ten-six.
Okay.
So about, it is a third and two-thirds, it's exact, almost exactly what our funding is.
Yeah. So, where the current funding is, or where the request to fund is?
That's the current funding, it's sixty-five, thirty-five.
Right.
But, once again, you have staffing up here, and I understand you're going, hey, but we're for a function as a district, just let's go off property tax value, it's a pretty simple solution, it keeps it pretty, pretty benign. When you start going off, okay, let's go off population, you go, it, 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 that's the problem, I think, with the...
But here's the thing, you're, the population is where the incidents are gonna occur, not, not on a piece of property, do you know what I'm saying?
Your call volume is about, it's about, what is it, it's about, it is about the third, two-thirds, I mean, it's...
Great, let's keep the funding that way, like, here's the thing...
So you get to have this, okay, and then I'll get pushback, you get to have the staffing up here, it sounds great, we'll have the lower staffing down there, but we'll pay the, we'll pay, I'm just gonna, we'll pay for Alpine to have their fires, what you're saying.
I thought we were gonna bring it to nine, so we had four and four.
It is, so, but you're not, so, but I'm still paying for six, and you're paying for three.
Why are you, why are you dividing it in half? Because, isn't it one unit?
It is, and why are you not doing, uh, doing it as also property tax value?
I have something to say.
Anyway, I, I, we're not here to argue this, 'cause we wanna be...
Here's the thing, Mayor, and I, I've been here for four years, and I'm, I'm on my way out, so these guys can decide whatever they wanna do. Over the last four years, there's been several instances where we've had, Highland has come to Alpine and said, we need more money for this, we need more money for this, we need more money for this, this is yet another one, and I, I, I like the agreement where it is, I think that's fair, to say, just because people wanna live in Alpine, and now, a piece of empty property costs so much here, and you've got one house, and two people living in it, literally, you, you know what I'm saying? Like, the fire department's not gonna go to that house, and then you have rows of town homes and things, people are gonna, that's gonna be more calls, and so I don't think, for me personally, I like the current agreement, I'm like, can we just have a moratorium on asking for more funds?
So Highland doesn't like the agreement, what we're telling you right now, we don't like it, and then we'll have to make a decision, if Alpine says, no, they don't wanna do it, that will be Alpine's decision, then Highland will make decisions on the other, I'm just, that's, as our council talked about going on their own, we believe it's a couple hundred thousand, now, I'll tell, I'll tell you, if we go on our own, we get the canyon revenue, so which will probably bring a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand in, we probably can keep the wildland, I'm just saying, the cost to go on our own is not as great as we think, it, we think it's about three million dollars, and so, that's what we're kinda looking at, we don't wanna go on our own, we think there's value in staying with the district, but if we have a partner that's struggling, that's saying, hey, we want to have you pay for, for that and have all the staffing, that will be up to our council to make some decisions on, just like your council need to.
I'm curious why you think you, you'd keep the wildland?
Because I think you can have, any, any fire department can have wildland, Alpine can have a wildland, Highland can have a wildland, so I don't, I'm just saying, we'd, it'd be one way we'd look at keeping revenue up, it's not, meaning if we separated, either the entities can go and do a wildland thing, it's not, it doesn't mean whoever at.
Hey, Chrissy, did you have a comment?
I do, thank you, it was hard to get...
Is there anything else you need from me?
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, she might, do you have anything for the mayor?
Maybe, but you can sit down, and if...
Then let me know.
So you can rest, thank you. Um, I'm just looking at this with fresh eyes, I don't have all the history of many, many years, in four years, but I really do feel like the partnership is in the best interest of both cities, and that's largely from my experience working in public service before, um, that the most important, the most important thing is that we hire the very best people, we're in the service industry, this is not about high-quality tech, or, or like, you know, um, fancy gear, this is about having the very best people, and we are a small service district, if we don't have the funding or the right situation, it's so easy for them to hop out and go somewhere, they're gonna get paid more, maybe the cost of living is less, it's a high cost of living to be working up here as a, on a fire, on a fire, on a public service salaries, so I, I really think that if we go really small, we're gonna be at even a more disadvantage, so, I'm not just talking about money, I'm talking about the most important thing is we have the very best people s- in our service district, and part of having a, uh, hiring the best people is not just about the money, but this contention is not good, if we're, we're gonna be partners, we're gonna be partners, and we're gonna, like, go at this together, and so I think there's some, like, economic principle that if there's a service, right, then there's some in the business world, if you spend time, like, cer- you know, in a service industry, you, your, your service is directly correlated usually to your revenue, but in the public service, there's no correlation between the services that are being offered, and the resources we have to go pay for those services. It's not like a business decision where everything is correlated, um, the more you work, or if you have highly skilled people, you can charge more, it's nothing like that, our resources are based on the economic resources, like, that, where we started this meeting, is what are the economic resources of the whole district, and the fairest measure of what are the economic resources we have to support the whole district, I believe it's fair to say it's property taxes, because that's the thing that's consistent, they have, probably have more sales tax and all that, because they have more retail, right? And so I, I feel like it's a fair measure of who has the resources to, to contribute equally, not, in, in equal proportion to our resources, not fifty-fifty split, but we, we have different resources, right? So, if we just disconnect all this stuff about service, because, eh, when you're in a public service industry, you can't correlate what the people are actually, like, what the firemen are doing back to any revenue source, there's no correlation, so I don't understand why we even talk about what, who's getting what service, um, I, I, it's a part of the discussion, but it's not really, there's not an economic connection between the service we're receiving, and the resources we have to pay for those services. Okay, that was my first point, I could keep talking about it, but I won't, um, what was the other thing? Okay, so I've talked about the best interest of the partners, and I feel like, to their point, and I'm not, I'm not on their side, but I'm on the side of the partnership, being successful, and to have a p- successful partnership, you have to have good feelings, and all of these six months of dragging out negotiations is like ruining the morale of like, our partnership, like, you should be, we should be working together, and I, it's really frustrating to me that we're getting stuck on it, now I know we have, like, different, um, funding models, and we're gonna have to work through our budget and all that stuff, and none of that's gonna be fun, but to me, I've always said, from the very beginning when I heard about this, and I've said it more than once, like, my objective is to make this the most successful partnership we can make it, 'cause I see zero advantages, economic, morale, and, and financial, to go on our own, I, I just can't see any advantages to that, and that's, I think that's all I'm gonna say.
So as far as like, you know, dragging things on, I think there was a differences opinion, and kind of by the letter that, um, Shane was mentioning, Shane's, in my understanding, and I'm assuming Jason's, 'cause he's been doing it much longer than I have, is that whatever the board decides, as far as the structure, and whatever they approve, then it comes back to city council, and city council votes on it, not the other way around, and Highland was going the other way, and, you know, there's actually differences of opinion both on legal, too, on how you guys were able to have discussions, and we were not, because we were following our legal advice, so the two cities were operating completely differently, they did closed sessions, which, but our legal says we can't, and so, that's kind of, like I said, it's just the difference in doing it, and so for us, I felt like we were following the procedure that we understood, is that the board makes a decision, and then we bring it to council, and then start the discussions, not the other way around, does that make sense?
It does.
So to me, it's not that we were not, it's, for me, it's just, this was our understanding of the process, and we were following the process.
Thank you for that clarification.
Mayor, just one addition to what Mayor said, the other, the other thing is, we did start talking about this early, but one of the component, or one of the, uh, parameters that we wanted, we didn't get that information until later in that process, so, based on that, I don't feel like we've drug our feet, there can be a difference of opinion, I respect based on that, I don't feel like we've drug our feet. There can be a difference opinion, I respect that. But, um, our board members wanted that information, and it took a while to get it and to have everybody happy with. It was call volume, is what it came down to.
You remember in our meetings, yeah.
It took a long time to get it, 'cause we had it all over the board. And when we finally got the information that I think everyone was happy with, then we started looking at alternatives.
It was a lot easier to do property value, 'cause.
I will track the part that, that due to the dragging out, it's ruining morale, but I do think the conten- the, the contentious part is, does hurt morale, regardless of if it's quick or short.
I agree with everything you said, Chrissy.
I know, but you don't, and you still disagree with me, but that's good.
Totally. We, so we're, the, the agreement is in place. No, nobody in Alpine asked to change the agreement, right, or asked to change the parameters. So we're not trying to force anything. We're trying to understand and react to what is being put upon us, and I think for us, we do want the best partnership possible, for sure. We also have to think about how is this gonna affect Alpine, um, and what comes down the road. So, like I said, and you can dispute this if you want, but like, this current thing of changing the fire department, it's, you know, is at the tail end of several things. So if you make this, if you say, okay, let's go with this now, what happens in six months? What happens in twelve months? What other services or what other things are we gonna be asked to pay? So for me, it's like, it's an expansion beyond just the, just the safety district or the fire department. I love, I love our fire department. I love the chief. I love Highland. I want us to stay together. I just don't think, if you look at property tax value, there's a lot of empty land here that is worth a lot of money, and it's just not a fair measurement of where we're at right now. I think the current way we're measuring it is the fairest way to do it.
And just to add to what you said, and this is all I'll say now, this isn't necessarily, this, we didn't come up with this in a vacuum. This was created by Highland and city, and Alpine City together to come up with the existing formula. I've been on this, the public safety board long enough. I remember when, um, Mayor Mann was still there. And, and again, I think this is something that's wanted to happen for a long time. I remember before Kurt mentioned in one of the public safety boards that, you know, I think we need to change the formula. And this was when Mayor Mann was there, and Mayor Mann had to say, Kurt, stop it. We're not gonna go into that right now. Remember those conversations? But this is not like a one-time thing. This is, and it, it, but we didn't come up with the, the formula ourself. It's been, it was done by both cities, you know, a while ago. And so the fact that it's changing, I'm not saying that it can't change at all, but, but to say that Alpine sometime, somehow doing something that's hurting the relationship to me is, is, is not genuine.
Yeah, that wasn't pointed just at Alpine. But I did start off saying this is just fresh eyes. I don't have all your history. I don't have all their history. I'm just trying to say what would be fair if you just, and I think it's great we're gonna get a third party, because I think we're having a hard time moving forward, and maybe a third fresh eyes would be helpful, and maybe my fresh eyes are not helpful, and I'm, can accept that.
What's the third party? All I'm asking is for you to be as passionate as Ma- Mayor Ossler is at advocating for his citizens, be that passionate advocating for our citizens. That's all I'm asking.
Brent, do you have anything to say?
Yes, I just wanna clarify that the alternative wasn't about the negotiation. I agree that there could be open more discussion about negotiation if Highland's willing to do so. I don't know if they are. Um, the, uh, the status quo is better for Alpine. Clearly, the status quo is better for Alpine. I'm not taking Highland's position or their side or anything else, but I do understand their arguments for their taxpayers. OSHA standards require for firefighters on staff to be able to adequately address a structured fire and making entry to save someone. It's not just about fire response. My dad, my brother, both retired firefighters, so I have a little bit of understanding of what firefighters do. I'd say at least ninety-eight percent of what they do is medical, medical responses, ac- car accidents and medical issues. But it's an insurance, and I think we owe it to our citizens to make sure we're staffing at an appropriate level to address, to, at the very minimal, meet OSHA standards for staffing. And I see Highland's argument that when seventy percent of the time, under our current staffing model, they only have three firefighters. Granted, they're a lot closer to mutual aid than we are, um, but I can see why they feel, especially when they're paying more, that they aren't tied to the four. So one option would be to go to four and three? I think you've asked any resident in Alpine whether they're willing to pay for four firefighters to meet minimum OSHA standards, to have that insurance policy in case their family needs an immediate response by a firefighter to rescue them in a burning structure. I would pretty much assume that ninety-five percent of the people in Alpine would be willing to make sure they have that funding level, that staffing level, and fund that. So, again, the, it's better for Alpine, and I represent Alpine taxpayers, and I think that's a better deal for us to keep it at the status quo. I see their points. And what I said is there are better alternative. Your response was let's keep negotiating. I don't know if that's even on the table. But what I'm saying is, what I don't see is a better response or a better alternative, um, outside of this agreement, this inter-local agreement. Are we really better off having to force them or they make, them making a decision to split from us? And we have two years to kinda figure out what we're gonna do, and according to the estimates I've heard through, from Shane, to have our own fire department at that appropriate staffing level would be so much more expensive. And it's not just the personnel. It's what was explained to me also was, we have two, each, each, each Highland station and Alpine station have an ambulance, and we have a third ambulance that we can use in case one goes down. So let's say the ambulance responds to a medical emergency, uh, a driver doesn't yield, they crashed into the ambulance and is disabled. If we're on our own, we have to have that secondary equipment somehow. So there are a lot of costs built into doing this ourselves. And I asked the mayor, is there another alternative if they do leave? If they say, all right, the, you had the offer to go to this level, which is not ideal for Alpine, but it's better than the fifty-fifty split of personnel that's been proposed as an alternative. So I'm just thinking, looking at it, representing Alpine residents, what is best for Alpine based on what our options are at this point? And if you think that you can negotiate more with them, that's, maybe that's.
Probably not now, after that.
But I'm not taking their.
Here's the deal.
I am not taking their side. I'm saying it's better for, I'm just trying to explain why I think there's no better alternative.
Why are you connecting staffing levels with a renegotiation of a price?
Because, that's what they're, that's what started all this.
Because of a threat.
No, no, 'cause.
No, listen.
Staffing is safety.
Let me talk, we're not supposed to interrupt each other.
Oh, you're right.
Because of a threat. So, well, I'm, I don't know. I've negotiated a lot of stuff.
I am, yeah.
Like, here's the deal. We didn't make, we didn't make the decision to put four people here and three people there. That was made by a professional. If the professional thinks that five people need to be there and three people need to be here, I'm totally supportive of that. It's a Lone Peak Safety District. If something happens in Highland and everybody needs to go, they go. They're two extra minutes away, right? And so I'm like, don't, don't, to connect staffing levels and the decision of a professional with changing a funding formula is, in my mind, it's just not, it's, it's apples and oranges.
Well, there are two separate issues, I agree. And the, the chief is, wants to have four in each, so.
Great, and everybody's for that.
Right. Well, I don't know about that, but.
Jessica hasn't talked yet.
But, but can we just go to the, the reason that they need four is to enter a building? So if we don't have four, would they, we can't, worst-case scenario, they're standing outside the building while it burns. Do you understand that?
I totally get it. And I don't, I, I don't know why you're equating changing of a form, a formula to a staffing level. They're two completely different things.
I see what you're saying.
Everybody here has said, yeah, let's make sure we're staffed. Everybody said get an eighth, get a ninth. We need to be staffed. But I'm just saying, we're, you're talking about changing a formula where now we're, we're paying for somebody's five-acre lot that's worth a gazillion dollars is now going into that formula, this empty space that no one's living in and no one's calling for help.
It would be assessed less if there's nothing on there.
Jessica, did you have any?
I just had a question around the inter-local agreement.
Mm-hmm.
Is that, that's something that's in the process of being changed, or that inter-local agreement is already set? Because as I consider this, and to council member laws, um, comment, you know, is this now an every-year conversation? Or can we attach some, hey, let's lock this formula in for five years. Let's lock this in, so it's not, again, the mayor indicated that he may have some new council members coming on board, you know, what can we do to be good stewards and oversight for our residents and not to go into something where we're getting pressured to renegotiate? And it seems like it's taken a lot of bandwidth out of you all, and when you all use your resources focusing on this, we're not focusing on other things. And I, I wanna take the word fair off the table. I just, it's, fair, I don't think is a business word. I think equitable is what we're talking about right now. We can sit here and go down data point by data point and come up with different formulas, but, or we can say it's equitable. I mean, if we wanna talk about two-thirds, one-third, let's look at our aging population. Typically, aging population has more calls. Have we factored that algorithm in to, to create a more balanced, fair formula? So I, you know, there's, I'm just thinking of several things, but the number one thing is I wanna know, moving forward and we agree to this formula, can we lock that in with the inter-local agreement?
Anything could be put in the inter-local, so at some point, someone would draft whatever the changes are. It would be circulated to both, uh, cities and city councils to review. Uh, there'd be, you know, a time for review. Typically on these, unless they're very simple, we go back and forth. Uh, for example, we just did an ILA with Highland on the forty-eight-hundred West Canyon Crest project. We went back and forth the changes. This one was among staff. Um, settled in on a final, and then it went to the councils for approval. So it'd be a similar type thing. So if a provision, you wanted to put a provision in there and there was agreement on both sides, something like that could be included. So.
So those, those are some of my thoughts. I just think this is equitable. I think there's some fixed cost if we had to have, you know, there's value in redundancy. There's value in a working relationship where we've worked with Highland now since, I don't know how long it's been. I mean, there, there is value in those things, and being a good representative of the residents, it is very important to them that they receive the top, um, emergency response time. I mean, they have that expectation, and so I don't think that as council, we're not being good stewards if we want to make sure that we maintain that high level of delivery.
Looking at me, should I respond to that?
No, no.
I think everyone agrees, everyone agrees with that. Everyone agrees with that. I just, you, you're gonna, you're gonna, you got your work cut out for you in the next four years. Well, you're gonna, okay, the next six years, 'cause you're gonna be in another term.
So, what I'm getting from is you're in favor of the proposal Brent is.
Just because of.
Right, no, we heard, and then Jessica, are you in favor of the proposal? Is that what I just got from?
I would like to see it actually be the true property valued number, which is four point, forty-one point six-six. It looks like it got rounded up in the assessment or the offer that they're proposing. So if, yeah, I would be for it with two things. Locking it in so that we're not every year going back to this formula and having these conversations and creating, I feel like, the uncertainty. I, I don't like this uncertainty. I don't think it reflects well, and so, um, those are the two things.
Okay. And Kelly, you're not in favor of the proposal, unless I totally misread you.
Not at this time.
Okay.
I think there's a, yeah.
I like, uh, what Jessica's saying. Like I spoke to, I feel like we need stability, and we need it for our residents. We need it to budget. We can't do this all the time, and more importantly, we need it for our staff that rely on this funding. So I would, I like Jessica's thinking that we provide stability forever, for all the reasons I just stated.
Can I ask a quick question? How is the police funding done?
By population.
Strictly.
Hmm.
So, do you wanna talk about the differences in police and fire staffing and where they, where their resources are spent?
I got up at four AM this morning. I'm ready to go to home.
All right. I can talk to you offline about that if you like.
I would say this, I'd talk to the chiefs about how Highland, Highland did a, a better job having a closed session, having this conversation, is to, to Kelly's point. You know, we got, we got people in the audience listening and they know exactly where we stand. They can come back and say, we're gonna give them a deadline. They can have all the conversations. We can't, you know? So it's, maybe they have a, no, I'm just kidding, Mr. Doxie, maybe they have a better attorney telling them they can go, they don't have to be in closed session. I'm kidding, that was a joke. But, but they have an attorney telling them they can have these conversations in closed sessions. Ours is on the record.
I'm sorry, but having lived under open meeting laws, we're doing it the right way.
Well, I'm, I, I would love it if both ways that way, were that way.
So Jason, are you in favor of the proposal?
I agree with Kelly.
Not at this time.
Saying, not, not now, but not never. Is that what I'm hearing?
What would you be, what would you be amenable to? Not changing anything at all, or would you be amenable to something else?
That's a good question. Um, I probably don't, I probably don't know enough right now to know what I would agree to, but I know, I, I know it's not this. Um, and I think it is appropriate to get to the right staffing levels, but I, I just, I hear a lot of, I, I feel like I'm in, I feel like I'm in the Highland City Council meeting right now. We've got people from Highland here looking at our people, and I feel like some of the conversations I've had have gone by the wayside because they're here and, and looking at us. So it's, it's interesting. I don't, I really appreciate Mayor Ossler and what he's trying to do for Highland. I think he's done a fantastic job. I think we could do better.
Jason, is there something that you would be, you have the background that Kelly doesn't?
The hard part is I agree with everything that Chrissy said, everything that Jessica and Brent said. As far as quality, we want the, a top-notch thing. It's all about the formula. There's a million different formulas you can put in place that'll give you different ratios. And the formula they picked out is this one, which moves us up two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars, then two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars. And it was just simply decided by Highland City Council behind closed doors. So, so yeah, we can, whether it's that or if we, we do call volume mixed in there, maybe there's, I mean, there's so many different ways to put the formula together, but the formula that we have in front of us that we have until the end of the month, before they're done with that and they're gonna move on to bigger and worse things, is the, the property tax thing. So not a fan of it. Not a fan of the process.
Mayor, can I clarify one thing?
Yes.
At the last board meeting when I was filling in, I did very specifically argue that population, ER use and call volume are more directly related to the actual services being provided by the residents. So I do think that there are better ways to do this. I'm just worried about what happens if we split and what that will cost Alpine. So that's my looking at the resident, for the residents of Alpine. I'd rather not have brought that up in this meeting, but I've kinda had to, I guess, to explain my position. Um, you know, I guess if they decide to do that, then we have to.
but I've kind of had to, I guess, to explain my position. You know, I guess if they decide to do that, then we have to find an alternative. And I think it would be much more expensive.
It's that.
So I would-
I, I argue that extensively-
So this isn't an optimal decision for you, but you feel like you're under pressure or too, pressure to make a decision now, and so you're gonna make the best decision you feel like you can make under the pressure of having to have this done in three days?
Well, it wasn't three days. We've been-
Well, it is now.
It, well, it is for you, but, right. I mean, I've been involved in this for five months now, but-
It's not three days for Kelly. Kelly's known about it. I mean, not as long as you, obviously, but yes.
I do think there's a-
It's three days from now.
I mean, you have run businesses, there is a principle of fixed costs. Like if you hire a new CEO, like if he works ten hours or twenty, like you, generally, you pay him a salary, so-
That's a good argument, Chrissy, but as you pointed out, this isn't a business.
No, no, I'm saying, so what are the fixed costs to run? I never got to the second part. So what are the fixed costs to run a, a department? To me, that's where I was coming from to begin with. That's all.
The fixed cost to run the Lone Peak, Lone Peak Fire Department is the fixed cost to run the Lone Peak Fire Department, which should be shared and distributed, to borrow a term, that I, equitably, right? And you've got to find a formula to do that. It's not like to, to say, to cast a division between, well, you've got four, we've got three, and you should pay for this, we should pay for that, is just a total red herring. We have a fixed cost to run the Lone Peak Fire Department, and how are you gonna find a formula between the two cities to-
The fixed cost is the bare minimum staffing at four at both.
So the fixed cost is the higher cost for Alpine. That's what they're saying, is the fixed cost to have four and four-
I know, I know exactly what you're saying.
So that's a worse scenario.
That's fine, and that's your decision to say, I'm gonna give in to the pressure and I'm gonna make this decision, which is what you just said. You said it's not the optimal decision, but I'm under pressure, I'm gonna make that decision. That's what I heard.
I said there, I think there are more direct correlations to population. And I'm not sure why the first agreement, this is the first I've heard, that the first agreement was based on property value and it only changed when Cedar Hills was added. I have no idea why that changed the history there, do you?
There was a, I remember reading about it, why they went away from that. I can't remember the specifics. But no, there was, I mean, probably to get the numbers where they needed it, really. Okay. Well, meeting is on Thursday morning.
I think we are mixing apples and oranges, kind of, to hear everyone, because there's, there's an incremental cost from going our current, current staffing up to nine, which would make everybody equitable in our level of service, 'cause everybody would have four at all times. And then there's also a, a funding increase due to the change in formula. Has anybody looked at that? Is it primarily this increase due to our staffing change or the formula change?
So what's happening right now, the Lone Peak budget was approved with an addition, like a ninth-
Okay.
Staff member. So it's really one times three. But part of that was full-time and part, there was one, part-time, two, full-time, right? Yeah. But the agreement was not to implement that until the funding formula was reviewed and changed. I mean, Highland made the motion. It was a two-two vote. Highland broke the tie because they have the chair this year and the tiebreaker. So, we're currently paying as if we have that ninth position, but it's not hired. It's not been filled yet.
Incremental change is a hundred percent due to the formula change, not to staffing. Okay, so we're, okay, that, thank you for saying, for clarifying. That, that just helps me.
Well, and the level of service, too, is totally a different thing, too, as far as, I don't feel like our service is lacking. Correct me if I'm wrong, chief. You think our level of service is lacking? In what way? 'Cause I'm not hearing that. Are we missing calls? Are we, I, my understanding is that we're giving more mutual aid than receiving. Is that not correct?
Absolutely. And we want to be good neighbors because we don't have the manpower. We're not staffing, we're not staffing at OSHA standards. We're not staffing at N, NFA standards, industry standard, our industry standard. Nobody staffs three people at a fire station. Normally, you drop to three, you shut a fire station down. So, that's where we're lacking. So we want to-
Okay, to say nobody does isn't correct, right? There are fire stations that are running at two and three. I'm not saying that's optimal, but there are.
Where are they?
There, Bluffdale, um-
Bluffdale is in, I mean-
Eagle Mountain, Cottonwood Heights. Eagle Mountain has a fire station that has two. Bluffdale has a station that has three. Cottonwood Heights has a station that has three.
Staffing level is, though.
What do you mean?
That's not what their, Bluffdale's staffing level isn't three.
For their, what are their stations it is?
Okay.
So one of their stations is three and the other is four.
Okay. So if we want to run, I mean, we can run three. And I've said it from the beginning, if you guys want to run three, just tell me to run three. I mean, if I'm the, I am the fire chief. I'm the fire chief standing here looking at this place going, you know how many I need in that station? Six. You're running, I mean, we got fifty thousand square foot homes in the middle of the urban interface. This is a paradise, right? And it's a paradise, California scenario, right? How are we gonna stop that fire? How are we gonna stop it with three people? How are we gonna stop it with four? How are we gonna stop it with two? We're trying to protect the citizens, the people that elected you guys, to protect them. That's what we're trying to do. We're talking about breaking up. We're talking about higher cost, lower service. I, I feel like, and, and I don't, I'm, I'm fortunate, I don't have to deal with the money part of it. I don't. That's, that's on you guys, that's on them. I just make decisions based on how we're tactically gonna attack what's in front of us. It doesn't matter how many calls we have, it's events. What's gonna kill people? What's gonna kill one of my firefighters? Right? There's huge risk. We're violating OSHA standards right now. Nine, we hope, is gonna do it. Mathematically, nine doesn't do it. It's gonna take ten. That's, I mean, I hope that nine gets us there, but mathematically, it doesn't.
And I'm all for saving taxpayer money. That's really high on my priority list, but at the sacrifice of public safety, I'm not. I think that's the, one of the top two primary responsibilities of government. That's why I don't think the idea of cutting back to three for Alpine is appropriate.
Who said, who said to cut back?
The mayor. The mayor's been a very strong proponent of that.
I have not. I didn't say, I just said, no, I said, there are stations that have three. I, he said that we're deficient. I said, where are we deficient? Are we missing calls? My understanding is that we give more mutual aid than we receive.
We have four. We have four every shift, right?
No, actually, we don't every shift.
Well, do we have-
Pretty close.
Sorry, say it again?
You said at seventy percent of the time, we only have seven firefighters and Alpine has four and Highland has three.
Yeah, seventy, seventy per, I mean, I would say that Alpine has four firefighters ninety-nine percent of the time, if not a hundred.
He said we went down to six sometimes.
And so, let me just, let me just-
And when we go to six, we still staff four in Alpine.
Let me just, let me just ask something again. Shane, you said that Highland City voted to not hire the staff based on, until the negotiation was done with the formula?
Yes, until there's a new formula.
So Brent, no one at this table here is telling the chief he can't be at the staff? Like, I don't know what you're arguing.
And Jason, I think, haven't you suggested that we not increase our staffing to nine?
We voted not, we voted against that because we didn't want it to be based on changing the formula.
So you would, you would support the funding for nine? I didn't get that from you last time. Thanks for clarifying that.
So-
No, they, I'm not trying to defend Highland, but just to clarify for you, they proposed, 'cause seventy percent of the time, they have three. So they said, well, let's just swap that.
That's, that's the chief's decision. That's a safe, that's back to your argument. That is a public safety decision. Where the chief thinks the best-
Have you proposed the increased staffing before and has been, not, been approved?
To increase staffing?
Yeah.
No.
To go up to four? This is the first time?
No, this is the first time I have. Yeah.
I misunderstood you, Mayor and Jason.
And the question was, are we missing calls? That was, you know, where are we, are we deficient in meeting, like, are we not meeting the current needs? And my understanding is that we weren't. Yes, we received mutual aid. But my understanding is with any kind of a structural fire or even a brush fire, it seems like everyone gives mutual aid. There's a fire, every single station is coming, and that's just the case no matter what.
And we get mutual aid for missing calls.
Where, you know, American Fork, everybody goes. Just because any kind of structural fire is gonna need more than what any station is able to normally handle. That was my understanding in talking to some chiefs.
You know, are we missing calls and then are we also preparing and meeting the minimum OSHA standards? I mean, that's what we're looking at.
Are we missing calls in Alpine and are we missing calls?
No, are we not meeting the minimum standards? That's my big deal. Like, we need to meet the minimum standards and not compromise on that. I'm not willing to compromise on that.
Well, no, I think, I don't think anyone is saying that we can't do it, but the question is right now is the, the staffing can't go to nine until the formula changes, but there's a disagreement on how to do that. But it looks like the majority of you are in favor of it, of the proposal that's in front of us, so unless you guys come up with something different from now till Thursday morning.
Is this a four to five, or am I confusing that with the open space? When we approve the interlo, not tonight, when we approve the interlocal, it's just simple majority? Okay.
But with, yeah, but at the vote on Thursday, it's a vote of four at the board.
Okay. I move that we adjourn, we pass the ten-thirty mark. I thought that's what Jessica mentioned. Did you say that?
For the business of the city is complete.
Oh.
Oh, just to be clear, there won't be a vote Thursday. It's, it's noticed. Yeah, the notice is out, I think. It's noticed as a discussion item.
Oh, when is the vote, then?
The twelfth, I think, is eleventh, whatever that date is.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn? Oh, did you second it?
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion to adjourn and a second. Rule call vote.
I, motion to adjourn, Jason second.
Kelly Law, no.
Chrissy Haneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Brent Remmler, no.
Jessica Smeon, no.
Okay, Mayor Ossler.
I want to hear what the mayor has to say. What, if one consideration, why we're also with the timing of October, is we understand you only have one more city council meeting. So we're trying to get the timing to get everything done before we have all these council changes. And so that's, if, if there, if we're deemed, if we, you know, and I think it would be nice to kind of have, explain what happens, goes Thursday, then it still has to go to a board on the twelfth. Your last meeting, I think you have a meeting on November eleventh. So maybe if we could, 'cause that would still need to have another vote. That's a consideration.
Right.
Okay, now I make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I second.
Kelly Law, yes.
Chrissy Haneman, yes.
Jason Thielen, yes.
Brent Remmler, yes.
Jessica Smeon, yes. Adjourn.